All right, we're going to call the meeting to order if you can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call of board members. Tim Erns.
Here.
Randy Milne.
Here.
Jill Kester.
Here.
Wendy Hochsma, present.
Linda Slobsma.
Here.
Okay, we're at set and adjust the meeting minute or the meeting agenda. So I have several changes here because we have several guests here for committee appointments as well as park employees. So we're going to move them to the front of the agenda. So the first thing I'd like to do is take item number K four, which is appointments to various commissions. And I will be moving that to the start of the presentation announcement section. So section G, so K four will be the first item. And additionally, I had forgotten to include an appointment for Keith DeYoung. That will be one of the appointments included in addition to the ones in the packet. Secondly, I'd like to move item J two, which is the park and recreation items. That will be the second agenda item in presentations following the appointments. The next one is the discussion on grants, which is K one. We'll do that as a third item under presentations. And then I've got.
Remove K six.
Uh, yes, correct. We're removing K six. I've got another one in here. Yes, those are the ones, the changes that I needed.
We would like to add closed minute sessions into the 1023 regular minute sessions as well on the consent calendar, and that will be passed around, initialled, and then sealed.
Okay. Or do you matter? I think it should be added to new business.
And I need to add a bill to the bills for approval from social explorations. Okay.
Linda, we would like to add to new business, the discussion about a community Christmas tree lighting.
Okay, so that will be. I'm looking at because of all my changes that I made. Hang on. All right. Okay, we'll put it right there at the bottom. And what did you call that again?
Uh, community Christmas tree lighting.
Okay, are there any other proposed changes to the agenda? All right. Somebody make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move Milne.
And I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Declaration of conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest with the content of the meeting tonight?
If it's for a community group like a church that she's recommending, then she does have a conflict of interest.
I don't.
It's a group of volunteers.
It's just happening. Not promoting her church. She's just gathered volunteers.
Then they should just go get a park permit and not be on the.
Maybe they will.
We will. That's what we're going to discuss.
Okay. You stay in charge. All right.
Excuse me, is that regarding the Christmas tree lighting, Wendy?
All right, uh, public comment. Uh, before we start public comment, I want everybody to be aware there's, there's a new one sheet form here intended to help smooth out the conduct of the meeting. So if you're going to make a public comment, if you can please fill this out and then give this to our recording secretary. All right, public comment. Anybody shall be permitted to address the meeting of the township board. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Comments shall be directed to the board with questions to the chair. Any person wishing to address the board shall speak from the lectern and state his or her name and address. Persons may address the board on matters that are relevant to township government issues. The chair shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed five minutes excluding the time needed to answer board member questions. In order to avoid unscheduled debates, the board generally will not comment or respond to presenters. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. So would anybody like to make a public comment tonight? Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we will proceed. So the first item on the agenda shall be the appointments. Keith, can you come up? The first one we're going to talk about is Keith DeYoung. Keith is currently our planning commission chair. And I'm recommending appointment for him for another three-year position on the planning commission. So does anybody have any questions for Keith?
Now, before we get into that, though, I would like to make a motion to confirm the recommendation of the supervisor appointing Keith DeYoung to a three-year term in the Whitewater Township Planning Commission. The term shall end December 31, 2028.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion made by Erns and seconded by Milne. Questions or comments for Keith?
Can you just, over the last term, just describe your experience on it and why you want to continue?
Sure. It's very challenging and rewarding. Being that I do live here in Whitewater Township, I like to see the progress that we're making. I like to see you to come together and take care of issues. And I think we're showing that in the last few months. There's, you know, major issues out there that we're trying to work on and bring together. And I think we're doing that in a. We're doing that in a way that the citizens agree with. Trying to bring everything to the forefront and trying to make the best decisions we can.
Thank you.
I have enjoyed the last three years doing the, working with Randy has been a pleasure. I really enjoyed that. And working with the master plan was, was a lot of enjoyment for me. And it was good, good product I thought we had at the end, so. If you're willing to put up with me for another three years, I guess I'm willing to do it.
Any other comments?
I think Keith has done a great job. It's been a very challenging time with the planning commission. Lots of ground to make up in terms of activities and projects to get done. And there's a path forward now to get through many issues that we have. And it takes a steady hand at the helm to make sure that that happens. And so I'm grateful for Keith's time in the planning commission.
Yeah, I would also echo that. I know the load has been really heavy this year. And so thank you for your leadership in, in getting it moving through.
Thank you.
And I think the public has recognized that as well, the momentum, which is great.
Something, just a procedural question. So after the appointments happen, is it annually that you reappoint leadership or does it happen every year? Okay, or after appointment happens, okay.
It's in their bylaws when, when they reelect their chairman and vice chair secretary. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of appointing Keith DeYoung?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Linda, um, the document says roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are correct. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay. So roll call vote on the motion.
Randy.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Wendy, myself, yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Wendy, can you call by last name?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. It helps me.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, uh, next we have Scott Trumbull. Scott, if you can come forward. So I'm, let me just page down to my, my page. There it is. Okay. So Scott met with Randy and I, and I'm going to make a motion to confirm the recommendation of the supervisor appointing Scott Trumbull to a three-year term on the Whitewater Township Planning Commission. The term shall end on December 31, 2028.
I'll second that.
So motion made by Slobsma, seconded by Milne. So I'd like to offer Scott, I have spoken to him in detail and reviewed his background and his ability to work on the planning commission and kind of offer it up to the rest of the board members with any questions that you'd like to ask Scott. He's replacing who again? It is. I noted in there, I noted in here Carl Robel. I wanted to make that clear since we have two open positions. Okay, and so after these two appointments, we still have one. Yes. Opening and as that, that is not because of the end of a term? That was because of. Correct, because David Bosler has said he can no longer serve. We haven't accepted his resignation yet, but we know that we need to find a replacement. All right, and when would that term be up? Um, you know, I would have to check my list when that is. Why don't I get back with you on that?
He was only appointed a year ago.
He probably leaves two years, but I don't want to hold up the meeting. I can let you know that's later tonight.
So we'd be filling his uninspired or.
Yes, that would fill the unexpired term. Okay, so questions for Scott?
Just a little, I mean, I can see what you wrote, but a little intro maybe and why you desire to be on the planning commission, I think.
Yeah, um, I've had experience with the planning commission on the residential side of things. And it just kind of piqued my interest. I had several people say this would be a good avenue to go down. More of like a learning experience and give back to the community. I think I can represent the community very well and, and see both sides and, and follow ordinances.
Or just to add to that, Scott recently went through the special use approval process with the planning commission and was able to experience the development approval process from an applicant standpoint. So, so that's helpful and is also an agricultural interest for the community.
Um, it's not noted in Scott's application, but he has a home-based business that he's running. So he's living in the community and doing business in the community. Other questions for Scott? All right, then I'd say roll call when ready.
Slobsma.
Yes.
Hochsma, yes.
Kester.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Erns.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Uh, and, and Scott, just to clarify, there is some paperwork with the clerk, including the oath of office.
Okay.
So her normal business hours are, you know, nine to noon, right, Monday through Friday? So in the morning, you can call and make an appointment or stop in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. One more question. Do we have any additional applications for that last position? Are we still looking? There are a couple pending. Okay. Just waiting for people to fill out paperwork or make a decision. Okay. All right, so the next one that we have on the list is Eric Gall. So Eric, if you can come up. So Eric is currently an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. So I'd like to make a motion to confirm the recommendation of the supervisor appointing Eric Gall to a three-year term on the Whitewater Township Zoning Board of Appeals. And that would be changing to a full member. The term will end on December 31, 2028.
I'll second that.
So a motion made by Slobsma and seconded by Hochsma. So I included Eric's information in here. So the floor is open for questions for Eric.
Well, everybody else got to say their little piece, so your turn now.
All right, well, um, first of all, Eric Gall, 4826 Moore Road. And I apologize in advance, I'm on day of duty tonight, so as much as I'd like to stay for the whole meeting, I have to split after this because of school morning. But anyways, uh, yeah, I'm currently an alternate, be interested in moving up to a regular position. Uh, if you guys would permit, um, I think that it's been a very interesting process getting involved with the community more and kind of understanding the process of everything that's happening. And with the background of my professional life, I think that I kind of got a mindset, maybe that likes to work with things procedurally and logistically. And I think that would be helpful in that type of a position to maybe kind of clean up some of the processes we've had in the past where things maybe have been skipped or overlooked or not done properly. So, um, so I'm just offering my, my service, my time and volunteer to the township and the community for that position if you'd have me.
So as an alternate, I think for the past year, right?
Yeah.
So have you been able to attend the one or two meetings they've had this?
I've been to two, there's been three meetings.
Okay.
Um, actually, there's one in January, which was the initial meeting. I can't remember if that was the, um, that was the case or not. Then there was another case that we saw, there was a meeting in August, which I was not able to attend to because he had a school function for his new school. And then there was a meeting in October. I think it was the most recent one. I've been to that one as well.
And then this requires training, doesn't it? Certain training, like.
Yes.
Right. And I think we just had some, were able to participate in that training.
Yeah, the online training is online. I've been through that. I've been reading through the Green Book and stuff like that. We've actually had a discussion as we met and talked about this, that I think the entire zoning board of appeals needs to maybe be more formally trained more often, you know, to make sure that everybody's kind of partaking in that. So I think maybe they'll kind of tie up, help types in the loose ends and the procedures that, of the meetings. I think there's things that need to be kind of reined in a little bit, and we all need to clean up the process. So I think we could all use a little bit more training and maybe trying to find a way to do that in person next year might be a good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You referring to the training that the township attorney put on just last month?
That was one in August. Yeah, that was a meeting I couldn't attend, but it is on a YouTube video.
Right.
Or a link, yeah, a three-hour video, yeah.
Three hours.
Yeah, it's, it's, can't get through it all in one swing, but there's a lot of good information in there, so.
I think Scott makes a, I'm sorry, not Scott, Eric. I think Eric makes a really good point because we frequently think that the zoning board of appeals only deals with zoning ordinance questions, but they also have a role in administrat- administrative reviews. Like some, it could be something that the planning commission makes a decision, which isn't just a black and white zoning specific ordinance. It could be like a special use permit, and those can, can end up at the zoning board of appeals. And I know I've seen a lot of that in the, reading the local newspapers, that's happened quite a bit in our region. Yeah. On development requests. And so as development pressure increases, some of those questions that would come to the ZBA can be significantly larger questions.
Yeah, very, very big impactful stuff happening lately in a lot of townships. So I think that we need to, nothing against our current members, but I think we just need to get everything procedurally lined up a little cleaner. You know, make sure dot our i's and cross our t's going forward, so.
Okay, other questions or comments for Eric? All right, then roll call ready, when ready.
Kester.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Erns.
Yes.
Slobsma.
Yes.
Hochsma.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, next we have Tom Bartnicki with respect to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
So Vicki and Bonnie, you're also.
Okay, but this is actually, this is for your Parks and Recs appointment.
Gotcha.
So I know we're double dipping on you tonight.
All sorts of Parks and Rec stuff.
All right, so I think you all are familiar with Tom as a. I think we're all familiar with Tom as one of our firefighters as well as a lead ranger for the park. This past year was another duty he picked up as far as the, a lot of, filled a lot of gaps this summer. So, um, anyway, this is, uh, I'm going to make a motion to confirm the recommendation of the supervisor appointing Thomas Bartnicki to a three-year term in the Whitewater Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The term shall end on December 31, 2028. So questions for.
I'll second.
Yeah. Motion made by Slobsma, seconded by Erns. Okay, so questions for Tom regarding the motion to appoint him to the PRAC? Go ahead.
Just for people that would be watching, I'm familiar with your experience in the township. But can you talk a little bit about as far as the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee? What recreational opportunities do you partake in as a resident of the township that we offer?
So a lot of hiking, biking, spending a lot of time in the nature areas as well as the park. Pretty familiar with the park properties, high prey in Whitewater Township Park just from working around those properties and mowing and seeing all, most of the 200 acres at Whitewater Township Park and all of high prey. And yeah, year-round recreation. Cross-country skiing, running, hiking, walking dogs, mooring, kind of just anything that time of the year, so. Yeah, huge trailer user, pickleball player, tennis player. Just an avid outdoorsman.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Tom? PRAC is very excited to have you onboard. This is a gap that has needed to be filled for a long time. So we're really looking forward to you joining us.
Awesome. I'm excited.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call when ready.
Milne.
Yes.
Erns.
Yes.
Slobsma.
Yes.
Hochsma.
Yes.
Kester.
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you. I'll see you in a bit.
All right, I think that takes care of appointments. So moving on, we're going to talk about the park and recreation items. So Tom, now you got to come back up again. All right, so on, on the list of items here. As I'm jumping around in my, in my things. So the first thing we were going to talk about is rates and dates for the 2026 season at Whitewater Township Park. And so this begins on page 34, if anybody wants to know where we're at. Okay, you can go ahead, Tom.
So first off, for dates, we have February 1st date of opening reservations. It's a Sunday. And we'd like to do that at 5:00 PM. From talking with Vicki years in the past, opening has always been kind of hectic and chaotic, people calling the phone. And some people would complain that if we did it at 9:00 AM on a Monday, they were stuck in work and trying to get on right at 9:00 AM to get their 4th of July reservation or whatnot. So we picked this February 1st. It's the first, it's Sunday, 5:00 PM, open up reservations. And that seems to be the, the first days where we capture a lot of the revenue for the park. First couple of days in bookings. And it's earlier years in the past, I believe was April 1st.
Right, so I think that was intentional to try and open it up and be more consistent with what state parks and other parks systems do.
Right.
How do you want to, do you want to go through these and have a discussion on each bullet point? Or, because all of them are a change. So, or do you want them just to finish and then we can go back to the ones we're interested in discussing further?
I think it's easier to just go through them one at a time and, and we don't need to. We, we will have a vote at the end, but does anybody have any questions regarding the logic of the first item of changing the opening date of reservations? I'm just wondering what the plan is for that day. And I, I'm only asking that because I, I know this last year that Mike was the only one manning the phones by himself.
Right.
And he said it was just crazy. I mean, he couldn't even return some of the phone calls or answers. So I'm just wondering, are we going to have multiple people, multiple phone lines?
So I spoke to Roverpass about that, and they had a tech error that day because they explained those concerns. And they said that that was just bad luck, that they had a server crash or something on their end, which wasn't allowing people to access it. And I asked, well, should we break up opening times to stagger the traffic? And they said, no, they're, they manage campgrounds much larger than ours, and they've never had traffic issues. So really, we shouldn't have to take many calls. I mean, I, I'll make sure I take that day off work and have the phone on and available. Or maybe I'll take one, Vicki can take the other or something. But really, it's all online and they shouldn't, yeah, you'll get people calling, asking some questions, but it's all online booking.
Bad April Fool's joke.
I think so.
Yes.
And they're going to call the clerk anyway.
Yeah, I would definitely commend having a couple of people available to answer the phone just based on what Mike's feedback was last year. It sounded like it was pretty crazy.
Most definitely. And once we get this calendar set, I want to work closely with Roverpass and provide them this information and just make sure we are good to go that day, so.
And one reason we're doing February 1 is that many people, when they're making their summer reservations for camping especially, they, just like hotel rooms, you know, they're trying to book in advance. We didn't open until Campground opened May 1. We didn't open reservations till April 1. And, you know, people have made their plans by then, and, and we think that that's been an impact on our, on our revenue, a reduction in our revenue. This should increase revenue by opening reservations earlier and, and allowing people to plan. And there was this idea, well, because April 1 is your fiscal year, so you can't really take any revenue in until the new. That's, I, that's not accurate. So we would just record any revenue that came in as unearned revenue and then reverse that entry and call it earned in the fiscal year that it belongs in. So it's just a bookkeeping thing.
Okay, we move on to your next bullet item, which is your.
That, there might be a typo there. I think it says May 1 to May 10, that'd be May 3, which is a weekend.
All right.
So, and that, that's part of the typos that we've kind of gone back and forth and discussed when we want to open the park in May 1st for simplicity, but also we are kind of slow in the beginning of May, so I'm open for discussion on that.
So what date are you suggesting, May 1st?
May 1st through the 3rd, or formerly it was, it must have been May 7 through the 10th. I think last year we opened the first, the second weekend of May with the discounted camping cleanup weekend. So a, a lot of it hinges on what type of winter we have. I mean, there could still be snow on the ground in April. We just don't know.
So are you actually proposing that, um, in that window of time, people could camp for only $8 a night?
Yeah.
But the agreement is they, they get that rate in exchange for working and cleaning up.
Yeah, and I think that's tradition with the park. They used to call it the free camping weekend.
Right.
Now that we're overpass, we, we would lose money if we offered it for free because there's reservation fees on Roverpass's end.
Right.
So it'd be an $8, like a reservation fee camping weekend, which seems like they've had good success with. They rake and it's usually sold out, I believe.
Yeah, we're getting rid of the word free because it really isn't free. It's $8, but still. I know, it's like it's free.
All right, so I, I guess I think we should make a decision what that weekend is going to be. So can you guys advise on that?
Do I have to tell you who I am?
I think we all know Vicki Emerson here. All right.
Right. So I looked back on some records from last year. We opened on May 9th, the free camping weekend. The weekend was booked solid. After, you know, the weekend, everybody left on Sunday. Um, after, you know, the weekend, everybody left on Sunday. Um, we had, Monday had only six people in the campground after that. Tuesday only had one person, Wednesday had nobody. So, I'm just a little concerned, we might be opening a little too soon, don't know what the weather's gonna be.
Sure.
So, I would like to negotiate that, because I'm, I mean, and then the, the following weekend after it was open, there was only nine, twelve, and eleven people there.
I feel like this is a department head discussion with the supervisor, not in a board meeting.
Okay, well, I, I would say that we should just choose that second weekend as your opening weekend, and just go with that.
Yeah, I think it would be more, um, financially beneficial.
So, I would like to clarify for the board, I have reviewed this several times, okay? And, um, this is an opportunity for the rest of the board members to make sure that you understand, because there are a number of changes here. So, um, I'm, I'm fine if we want to change this to the second week, it, it sounds like that's your recommendation. Cause otherwise, if we opened earlier, we would be staffing, and there would be nobody there paying, and we would lose money.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we move to the discussion about the off-peak rate? You can just explain that, so people understand what that is, and you can cover, you have two off-peak rate, um, windows there.
So, last year was the first year the park implemented a okay, no, we're going to peak, okay, so the off-season and the peak season rates, um, just due to demand. Currently, we have premium and non-premium sites, and peak season, those premium sites are sixty dollars, and, uh, standard sites are fifty, so we're kind of eliminating two-tier pricing, and just pricing all of our sites the same. For simplicity, for marketing, we can get on different platforms according to RoverPass with the single-tier pricing. So, our off-season and our peak seasons are kinda just compromising between those pricings, between those rates, so currently, our off-season standard site, it's forty, the premium site would be fifty, so we're just meeting in the middle at forty-five. And off-peak would be before Memorial Day, and resuming again after Labor Day, and peak season would be Memorial Day to Labor Day, which is pretty standard in the industry.
I'm curious what, the Traverse City State Park is opening, reopening when, do you guys know, isn't it?
They, they're scheduled to be closed for all of twenty twenty-six, however, they're moving quickly with the construction, so, um, that project's been fluid, they weren't gonna be open at all last year, they were open through Cherry Fest. Um, but they're still scheduled to be closed through twenty twenty-six.
Do you think that there would be any opportunity this coming up May to capture some of their normal business and?
We hope so, especially with the opening reservations February first.
Yeah, so it might be different this year, you know, this year, just because of the park of opening a little earlier.
I think.
Just because of that.
And, and, and we had a lot of new people this year who said they would come back. Um, so, word of mouth is getting out there, we've had a lot of really happy campers.
Yeah, and as far as pricing, I've, I feel like we're at the top of our tier, I mean, we don't have water hookups, we don't have sewer hookups, we don't have, not all of our sites are level. Um, we do have access to a boat launch, and they're pretty secluded and wooded sites, however, I don't, I think we're at the, towards the top of our price range, I'd hate to push people away.
Alright, so I thi- I think you're down to, um, you, you chose a date for a Halloween Fall Harvest Party at the end of your season, and then a closure date at the end of October.
Yep, so that would be the, the, the last weekend that the park would be open, would be the Halloween party. And staying open through October, which this year wasn't an, an option really with the electrical project, I mean, it could have been, it just would have required closing a few loops, and we already had that calendar set, so I think this year, we could capture some color season campers and stay open through the fall.
Okay. Um, I think you already touched on your off-season and your peak season rates. Correct?
Yeah, and that kinda also included the single-tier pricing.
Yep.
So.
And then, when you come down to boat passes, are, are these all carryover prices, or have any of them changed?
Um, only the underlying ones are changes, so all the boat passes are the same. There is a question mark next to commercial rate, which we have yet to discuss, I don't know if we wanna discuss that tonight, or?
I think we should do that separately.
Okay. Um, firewood bundle would be a change in price currently, we buy it pre-bundled for five dollar, for five and a quarter, so five twenty-five a bundle. This would be bulk firewood, we could buy it by the cord, um, for a lot cheaper, and sell it in crates or buckets, or just try to bring down that price of firewood, cause at eight dollars, then we, we go ahead and sell the five dollar and twenty-five cent bundles for eight dollars, and campers complain. Um, there is some backlash, cause it comes out to sometimes over a dollar a piece for the firewood.
It doesn't, doesn't last very long.
So, we would like to bring that down to five dollars.
So, would the park staff then put it in bundles, or is that what you're?
We would do buckets or, um, like milk crates in a woodshed, so campers could fill a bucket for five dollars, and then we could also shop around for vendors. There, there's more options, cause not every firewood vendor offers bundles.
Do you have any kinda estimates of what that would cost, and like what the profit would be enough?
Um.
Compared to five dollars a bundle, what would you be paying for it?
I have not ran the numbers, I think it would be similar profit, if not more, cause it, we could get like a quart of firewood for, last I checked, is around a hundred or a hundred and twenty dollars. So, I've yet to call vendors and actually figure out how many buckets fit into a cord.
Find a vendor that doesn't need cash on delivery.
That too. So, I know we struggled with our fireworks supplier.
To change that.
Hmm.
I did get him to change that.
Good.
Okay, so, um, and I am thinking, you know, it is taking a long time to go through this, so maybe we can hit the high points on this.
Yep.
I think.
Whitewater, or, yeah, Whitewater Township Park Pavilion, that would be coming down from a hundred dollars a day to seventy-five, we don't have a ton of renters there.
Right.
That we just feel it's a better rate at seventy-five, and same with High Prey, um, it's a smaller pavilion, there's four picnic tables. It doesn't get rented a whole lot, so that'd be coming down from seventy-five to fifty dollars for a rental fee. And High Prey batting cage would remain the same at ten dollars per hour.
Um, it looks like you also had an, uh, adjustment, um, to extended stays, so remove the fourteen-day limit during off-peak season.
Yeah, so, I think the whole idea with eliminating extended stays was to open up sites and to get new people into the park, open up some of the, the more sought-after sites, which were occupied by extended stays. So, this year, we had a few people in the fall that wanted to stay past their two-week limit in September, when the park was maybe at thirty or forty percent occupancy. And we had to say no to some of those folks, and it just seemed kinda silly to turn people away when we have space in the park. Um, peak season, it's totally different, the weekends are sold out, there's plenty of traffic, but during the off, off-peak season, we feel like we don't necessarily need to enforce a fourteen-day limit.
But you may have to ask them to move to a different site, if somebody already reserved where they're at, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't move any reservations, but they would have an option to, to book, say, three weeks in September if they wanted to. I mean, they're not gonna be able to
Oh, I see.
Kick people out of their site, but yeah.
Right, okay.
Next, we have the camper boat parking area.
So, this is a rule change?
This is a real change, currently, everybody, all the campers have to keep their, their boats and equipment on their campsite. So, this would allow registered campers to park in the back of the gravel lot, there'd be signage overnight, parking for overnight, parking for boat, boats, overnight camper use only, first, find some verbiage that works. That way, other people don't see the boats parked there, and wanna park there, and come back the next day. But we just feel the campground can get congested with boats, people backing boats in and out, and, um,
Within the, within the campground.
Within the campground, near the sites, and and some people would also get frustrated with that rule, cause they see three big empty parking lots, and they're like, oh, why do I have to squeeze my boat onto my site, so. I think it, it pleased the campers. Next is, uh, installing a pay station near the launch. We feel like this would help with capturing some boat launch revenue, especially when rangers are out cleaning bathrooms or checking sites, or even the early, early riser who's there before we open, or people that come after, um, the ranger station staffed. Just the ability to pay at the launch, cause right now, there is a pay station at the ranger station, but that's quite a ways from the physical launch, so we just feel like if there, there was a drop box and some envelopes, that we could capture or boat launch.
Traffic.
So, you're thinking about a box where somebody could put their cash in there, is that what yours?
Yeah, like a drop box, um.
Launches have.
Yeah.
Right, right there at the launch, so when they're out
Right.
launching their boat, it's convenient.
Yeah.
You just feel like more people would be likely to pay.
Yeah.
So, with her new Y entrance to the, um, going down to the boat launch, a lot of people are taking the right side of that Y, and they're not even stopping at the ranger station. But not everybody knows that there is a box outside the ranger station to make payment if we're not there.
Cause they don't see the thing that says stop, pay launch fee.
Well, I think most, most, every boat launch I've been to has the drop box right by the dock, and so, I think they, they just think that it's gonna be down there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's try and keep, keep moving along here. The next one, it was another customer service issue that you had here about site occupancy.
Yep, so elimination of the extra tent fee, um, this one was quite confusing for staff and campers. It's written, so it's something about a thirty-five dollar fee for an extra tent, and this was one that I discussed with some campers and staff, and we struggled with it, cause you could have a big thirty-five-foot fifth wheel plugged in, running two televisions, a fridge, and an outdoor kitchen. And they're paying less than the family that wanted to set up two tents, so we just feel like it was a kinda convoluted issue that people weren't sure if they had to pay extra for their extra tent, but then, they didn't, if the kids were in the tent, but if another adult was sleeping in the tent, they were supposed to pay an extra thirty-five dollars. So, I think our rule that, our site occupancy rule, or our site limit rule, would kinda help cover those issues with six people per site, I think the whole extra tent rule is written, so you don't have multiple families occupying one site and overwhelming the bathhouse and other park amenities, so I think our six-person limit per site kinda covers that issue.
Okay. So, the next one was the RoverPass credit card processing, I think you've done a lot of communication with, I think you've spoken with the treasurer's office on this.
Yeah, so RoverPass just, uh, starting last year, they created a payment option, or a, uh, like a credit card system in a cart. And we could add all of our park items on RoverPass and accept payment through their, their platform.
So, would we be buying little handheld terminals from them, or how does?
So, they use Stripe, which is the same as B S N A, however, our current device is locked on B S N A, so we'd have to find a password, and then put RoverPass's application on that device.
Do we need more than one device for the, device for the park?
Two would be ideal, if, if we needed one to get started, that'd be fine, but it'd be nice to have one in the ranger station, and one mobile that could go out to boat launch traffic. And that could generate daily reports, it would have ice, wood, boat passes, everything on a daily report, and hopefully go cashless in the future.
And my vision is the balancing then would be to run that daily RoverPass report, and then create the proper receipt in the S N A, so there's one receipt for every day, so the treasurer's office is simply verifying the RoverPass to the cash receipt, that everything was entered properly, and then whatever small amount of cash that there might be to reconcile. So, I think that could be, instead of that long sheet that you now do the daily, that would go away.
Well, that, that would save you on the labor too, right?
It'd be easier to end the night, to balance and go home.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think it could be very beneficial for the park, though, having everything in one place, and on RoverPass.
Back to, I just wanna back up one time, the limit of six people and two vehicles on a site, um, there were five kids in my family.
Right.
If somebody has five kids, you're gonna say, nope, can't stay here, I mean.
I, I, I won't personally, I mean, the kid thing.
You know, I mean, there, there's gotta be.
There's some leeway if you have kids, I mean, it's, it, it's really, we don't want four families booking one site.
I get that, but, so, just the way it's written, though, it, but.
I mean, that, yeah, that was carried over from
Right.
The current set of rules, so I mean, I've, we could rewrite it if needed.
And a lot of people, if they have questions, they'll call about things like that.
So, that, that it's a one family and two vehicles?
My brother could have slept in the car, that'd have been fine, probably, but.
Alright, so let's kinda keep, I know it's a lot of information, but I think it's important that the board understands the number of improvements that we're trying to make in the operations of the park.
But then, last is adopting RoverPass's super strict refund policy, so currently, we have a custom free-form policy in RoverPass, that's however we wrote it, or the former board wrote a refund policy. And RoverPass offers structured policies, which are more automated, um, they would handle refunds, um, whether people are allowed to refund or not.
So, this would allow people to just go online and cancel and be refunded, as opposed to right now, it is a personal phone call.
Right now, they submit their, they go on, they go on RoverPass, they cancel their reservation, they request a refund, and then it has to be approved by Vicky, Zach, or I, or who, who's ever on the computer at that moment, and because it's free-form, RoverPass doesn't know our refund policy, so each one needs to be verified.
Right.
That's very tiny.
So, I believe this was part of the insanity of last year's opening up too, is there were a lot of people that made mistakes and then had to cancel, and that, that was part of that total chaos. But it seems to me that this is a much easier way and more aligned with expectations of people these days. I expect to be able to go in and cancel my Amazon order and cancel anything else I do online.
Yep, and we decided, or we're recommending the super strict policy, cause some of these are, um, very loose, and definitely cater more towards the camper.
Right.
Super flexible, being a hundred percent refund one day before.
I, I think this, the one you chose also most closely aligns with what we're currently charging.
Yep, and the big thing And the big thing when I was thinking about refund policies is we want to prevent people from going on their opening day or February first and booking out. All these weekends. And then. Wait till May thirty first or June first, then cancel it for full refund. And now we have holes in our calendar. Which. I mean, I get it. People want flexibility, but you don't want people to take. You don't want thirty people to cancel Fourth of July weekend. Three weeks before, not to say it's not going to fill. But.
So they basically have to give you a thirty day notice for a free cancellation.
Yep. And one thing I'm not sure with the Rover Pass structured policies is they get the eight dollar ref- the reg- reservation fee or not. I know currently. That's non-refundable. So I would imagine it's the same Rover Pass isn't going to want to. Give up. Their. I don't know, their fee.
I guess we just need to check on that, right? So I think we've gone through and hit the high points. I'm going to make a motion to approve the calendar dates, the rate changes, the extended stay. Uh, policy change, the camper boat park uh. Boat parking area rule change. Uh, the recommendation to install a pay station near the launch, uh elimination of the extra tent fee. Um, approval to proceed to implement the Rover Pass, a credit card system for the incidental charges. And adoption of Rover Pass's uh automatic, super strict refund policy.
I would just say the calendar dates as amended.
Calendar dates as amended.
So did we decide on the first weekend of May or the second?
Decided on the second weekend.
Even despite that, um. The the Traverse City Campground is closed.
May eighth to the.
Based on last year's occupancy.
Historically. The campground doesn't tend to pick up until school gets out. And the two is in June.
I think that's an industry kind. Standard with people have their stuff winterized and it's kind of a process to uncover your camper and. Break it out for the season.
Give you a chance to get started up again too.
Yeah.
So you're paying for a ranger or two with nobody in the campground. Which, you know, if there's work that needs to be done, fencing and that kind of thing, and you know, that's fine, but.
And I also thought about staffing. If we do have college kids or high school students. That's going to be a tough time to staff just due to availability.
All right. So I made a motion to approve those. Motion made by Slops and a seconded by Aaron's. All those in favor? By those opposed, non-opposed, motion passes. So. Yeah, thank you for that. I know it was a lot of details and we can continue to. What we need to do is something just continue to start implementing that and communicating. So um campground and boat launch tree work. So you provided some information here about some quotations received for um addressing some trees.
Yeah, so it all started, there was a big like. Alum tree down by the boat launch that I looked up and saw had a dead limb on it. And then I started noticing more and more dead standing trees around the campground. So. I started having um tree services come in and do a risk assessment and then a. A lake view quote, which is more aesthetics for to clear the ridge. Below the lake view, below the ridge sites. So we had four uh different tree services come in and provide quotes. They kind of varied. They're all. Very similar and. Their. Scope of work. I mean, all of them. One came through with pink tape, one came through with blue tape, and one came through with paint with a blue. Paint in all the, they're all pretty much marked the same. So. They're all for the same level of work.
Do, did you verify that they are insured?
Yeah, I required insurance for them to submit the quote. And. Yeah, the risk assessment's mostly for dead standing in high traffic areas or near sites. And then the the lake view. Is for. If if you have a pack in front of you, you can see the pictures on. The second picture. That's the same ridge and on the left, it's never been maintained and you can't see any of the water on the right. It's been maintained, but starting to grow back. So I thought that depicted the area well that just kind of showing how. It's important to keep up. On that ridge to maintain the view.
So some of this is full removal for risky stuff that's dud or?
Yeah, that's the first number. That's the risk assessment and the other ones.
Trimming, right?
The other one's aesthetics for the lake view for the ridge.
A couple of questions. So the the lake view material there that you're talking about removing some live trees. This isn't dead trees. You're just talking about improving the view. That you.
Right.
And and so would would they be taking the trees completely out of there and chipping it up? Or are they just knocking the trees down or what?
So on that ridge, they would just be following the trees, leaving them on the steep. Ridge line.
Okay.
Um, which they've done. I don't know when the last time they did that was, but they've done it before and it's just becoming time to. To do it again because things grow quick by the water. Um, and for the other ones, it's actually leaving the wood on property. Also, they would chip all the limbs and branches. Anything up to about six inches they could chip and the rest of it, they would just leave. Kind of at the base of the former tree and we figured it's a campground. Eventually. It's going to disappear. Campers are going to burn it. So, yeah, we were fine with them leaving the the wood on property.
But what about stump grinding? That would be probably one of the big things with the differences in prices. Um, did they address that they would grind the? Stumps or leave the stumps?
No, we don't. We didn't think we needed any stump grinding. They're just going to cut them flush and. Leave them where they are.
Okay.
So it's in the campground, it's mostly a lot of dead standing pine.
Okay.
They're on the perimeter of the site. So they're not in the way of leveling up a camper or anything like that. So.
Just be unsightly. So if you had stumps this high everywhere. But if they can cut them down right to the basin.
The self pride tree care did come out this week. And bid one thousand dollars to do the lake view portion. So their bid actually is the low bid of. Five thousand three fifty.
Yeah, I'm at Crabless and his crew out there.
What is nine hundred? What? Edward was nine hundred.
No, total price, total price.
So that's fifty three hundred versus the second lowest price on this list is sixty eight hundred. It's quite a bit of money.
Yeah, and.
So did they make the individual decisions about what trees come out from the lake view? So there there's, we're talking about different numbers of trees by each of the companies.
They they were given the assignment just to to clear the view and allow for campers up there to see the water. And they all seem. Pretty on par with one another.
So the same number of trees essentially are coming out of all those, all the different scenarios here.
Yep, there's, I think it's site. Fourteen through nineteen maybe up there and then also the the deck. There's a, there's a viewing deck.
So would you say half the trees are coming out or or a third or what was just a rough number?
I'd say. Twenty to thirty trees are going to be. Fell on that hill.
I just have. I I guess I've not looked at that carefully, but it seems there might be some issues. I mean, that that smoke's really steep there. I would hope that uh. The roots are going to stay in there. You're just felling the tree. The root systems are staying there to hold the soil in place. So we're not getting erosion into the lake.
Yeah, they were going to leave a couple of the large, um. I guess nicer trees and there are a lot of poplars that are maybe six to eight inches that grow quick and kind of obstructive. Um, so they were just going to help mitigate that hill and and if they're going to leave a tree, keep some alleys of. Some windows of of sight. Out towards the water.
So that is a good point. Those poples, they will grow back. They they never die. So. So that'll help as well. But I agree. Yeah, you you don't, you want to leave the root system in to maintain the.
And I think the attraction of that area is the view because there's little shade up there and these trees don't offer. Any shade, they're down below the campsites. So I think the attraction to that area is is the view. So I think it's important that we maintain that.
Yeah, as long as we can stabilize the soil and we're not going to jeopardize that. I can appreciate though.
So I think the plan was to do this this cutting soon though, right? Like now, thirty?
Yeah, I. One of the contractors actually text me before this meeting would like to get started tomorrow, so.
Right. So it seems to me the two load bids, load bids are self pride tree care and AA tree service. Do you have a preference between those?
I met with Travis from Self Pride out there on Monday and I I think we should, we should hire them for the work.
Okay, well, I I will make a motion to. Um, issue a purchase order to self pride. Tree care in the amount of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to do the tree removal and the lake. View. Adjustment at Whitewater Township Park.
Shall second that.
So motion made by Slops and a seconded by Kester. All those in favor? Those opposed, non-opposed, motion passes. So you can uh work with Wendy to get a PO.
Thank you.
Um, so next topic rolling down here is um. I think in the interest of time today, I I just want to summarize and ask for each board member to give me. Uh, feedback. I think everybody, there's the history there about what we have done as far as management of the park. And looking forward into twenty twenty six, um, there had been a discussion about three weeks ago about. Uh, moving towards a little bit. Better clarity on the role of three lead rangers to manage the park. Um, this summer, we had mostly just these two lead rangers and and intentionally trying to look towards having three. Lead rangers to manage things. And so um if you could provide some feedback on that. I I would also say feedback regarding um the fact that we. We do not have a park administrator and clearly this lead ranger for overall operations is basically. The administrator role. So um if people can be thinking about that, we need to have a plan and start recruiting to. To hire a person to fulfill a role. Similar to this. Or if you have any other ideas, they're always welcome. Any questions immediately? I think we can follow up on that.
But we still have, you still are both planning on being two of these. At least, right? Do we have a candidate for the third one?
The middle one, we don't have a person figured out for that at this time.
Okay. And are we still planning on having a host?
Um, the person we had as a camp host last year said they did not want to return to the role. And so um I think in the. Prior paperwork, it indicated we would try and reserve one site for potentially a camp host. But um we we would have to locate a suitable person.
And I think that model is to have somebody focused on campground specific. Operations, correct?
Right, right.
Reservation staffing. Campground specific.
Okay, yes, Vicky fulfilled the role of the third one down, kind of the daily operations. Standard work, instructions and requirements, customer service, improving sales, dealing with the problems. And the other person would oversee staffing, et cetera. So please be thinking about that because that needs to be addressed and we need to find a suitable person to fill that role. Um, I've also included uh some information about the boat wash. Um, actually, I'm sorry. Any other questions for these guys before we let them kind of?
Just just before you leave that memo, um, so we're going to come back to this issue. Is that what you're?
I think we need to come back to that issue and get around to talking about seeking, seeking uh another. Lead ranger to work at the park with those kind of. Roles. That was just a quick thing based on a conversation, what that job would entail.
Yeah, this isn't a job description that we're approving. There's nothing really to approve. It's just.
Makes sense.
All right. So I don't think that um in the interest of time that I uh. Does anybody have any questions about we're proceeding to plan for the implementation of the boat wash at the park? Anybody in the board have questions about this? I've been working with Tim on this. We've also been seeking some support. Potentially from C two AE to help with bid documents, things like that.
And that's law.
And yes, Elks Kigabang has been helping with this.
And just, just so people know, we got a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Grand Travers Band. Several years ago and had it refreshed this past year. To let them know we still plan to do the project and they allowed us to keep, keep the funds. With that in mind, so we're hoping to have the boat wash station operational before the park opens in the spring.
Be nice. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your help and hard work.
I just want to say, um. It's been a, you know, Tom and I. In new roles this year, it's been really nice to have the support of the board. Um, I know I've called Tim sometimes on weekends, looking for some guidance. I've called Linda. And um. Appreciate all your support. And I'm sure I'm speaking for the whole park staff.
Thank you.
Yep, I'd like to recognize Bonnie's smiling face back there too. She's one of our returning park rangers that joined the team a few years ago and. Been a steady person there for us.
She's a worker.
Yep. Okay. All right. The next thing we are going to cover is the grants, which had been item K one. Josh, that is you. So this is following the process of reviewing um grant. The intent to um fill out grant applications and the board agreeing that they agree with the list prior to proceeding to submit.
Yep, so I submitted um and and talking with Tom. So. Some of these, I know it's under the fire department township, the. Letterhead, but uh there are two that are for the park. Um, one is public access AEDs and park safety upgrades. Just talking about getting additional AEDs at the park. Currently there's one, but getting one at the boat launch, maybe one at the bathhouse. And then doing new safety buoys, new throw rings, you know, the life raft that you always see at the boat of a. The beach area and updated signage, just to kind of. There's a lot of people that come through. So looking to the tribe to hopefully um fund that project. Uh, then for the fire department, two sets of turnout gear, um, just to keep that cycle going of replacement of gear. The third would be new thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. Um, the tankers is. Uh, situational awareness where it should be a a decision making tick and also one for my truck as well. The fourth is court refurbishment of of High Prairie Park and redoing the tennis court and um. I haven't got a ton of information on that one because but I'm going to.
Yeah, I can add to that. Tom Bartnicki has helped with getting some updated uh pricing. Um, the Prac had already had. Some pricing done about a year ago. So he worked on getting some updated pricing and pretty much confirmed, you know, the. The approximate cost is right about fifty thousand dollars. And I think the only difference was is we, we asked for quoting for some enhanced. Um, dual use painting of the courts so that we could get the most um value out of the courts. And what I mean by that is. We currently have two tennis, two pickleball and one basketball court. And when this is done, we will have two tennis. Five pickleball and one basketball court. And that's just by using multi-use painting schemes, different colors. To be able to accommodate and that would include the proper height nets for pickleball. So I think that would be. A good, a good use.
Yeah, and we're, we've typically done that, you know, five to ten percent township funding into the projects. I've kind of increased that a little bit to say, you know, we'll cover twenty five percent of the cost just. Because there were so many grants. Applied for last year and they only have so much money to give out that when people match a little bit more. They're typically a little more apt to um help fund it. So um. Like I've already, number three was written last year. And the post office lost my mail, so it never got delivered. So I'm just regurgitating one that I wrote last year. So uh but these, these don't, I mean, I wrote a two percent grant for the regional training center yesterday and it, it was twenty minutes of my time. So these don't take a ton of time. Time to do, so.
Alright, questions?
So, oh, I'm sorry. And I just had a, a word thing, no, nothing, just under one. You say in here, and I was wanting to make sure when you write the grant, if we agree to do that, but you said neither High Prairie Park nor Whitewater Township Park currently has outdated A E D or modern safety water infrastructure.
That's a typo.
Right.
Yeah, I would, yeah. Currently, High Prairie Park does not have an A E D. Whitewater Township Park does.
Just wanted to make sure.
I, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Randy?
Question, so under the uh. Your memo here at the end is uh talking about the. Two percent grants for the twenty twenty five fall cycle. Is that, what, could you give me the timeframes?
So these, I will write these next week and put them in the mail and also email them to Jane Rule. Um, because like I said, some of our, our grant got lost last year in the mail, so if we would have emailed it, we wouldn't have been denied, but. So they do a spring cycle and a fall cycle. Um, and so the spring cycles do November, the end of November. With awarding usually happening the end of December into early June.
So this is, these four are only for the fall cycle?
Only for the fall cycle, yep. And when we had met with the tribe, they had recommended submitting more than just one. We've always typically just done one. And so when you just submit one and you're denied. That's it. So if we submit four or five, that was kind of the understanding we got from the tribe is just submit a few, see what happens. Hopefully we have a better luck.
Yeah, so last question.
Alright.
So two of them. Are gonna be from Whitewater Township, two from Whitewater Township Fire?
Yep.
Okay. That makes more sense than four.
Yeah, right, yeah, two and two. Alright, so um I believe we need a motion to approve this, so uh I can make a motion, I will make a motion to approve writing. The four two percent grants for the twenty twenty five fall cycle.
I'll second that.
So a motion made by Slope Suma, seconded by Milne. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Those opposed, none opposed? Alright, thank you for pulling that together, Chief Morgan.
Linda, I clarified just some verbiage. On your motion, um, you, you said to approve writing the four two percent grants.
The four two percent grants for the twenty twenty five fall cycle.
Okay, I was just following.
So there's four projects.
It said the following two percent grants. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, don't need that word.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so now we are on to um Chief Morgan, your uh fire emergency services report.
Yep, uh, just wanted to provide a quick update on the weekend, weekend staffing proposal that I had put in there. Um, starting this month, we're gonna start staffing from Friday at seven P M through Monday at seven A M. Um, this is completely being handled by entirely with our current roster of firefighters and E M Ts. We've adjusted schedules, built a rotation that keeps the station covered on weekends without adding any new firefighters. We've done it all in-house. Um, this model replaces the paid on call weekend system, which had started becoming harder and harder to fill as it kind of advanced through. Our personnel have shown more interest in the structure shift work because it allows them to provide more value to the department and then to the community. Um, moving in the staff weekend approach gives us more of a reliable schedule and a consistent response when the calls come in. And it also reduces fatigue and stabilizes that workload throughout the week. Um, the added benefit is maintaining consistent staffing. It will also allow us to upgrade our licensure on our vehicles to B L S. From medical first responder. All that does is gives us a couple more tools and capability that we could provide patient care until M M R arrives. Um, essentially, we can provide some more drugs of overall, we can do some more advanced treatments that we can't do currently. Um, and just for clarity, the clerk and I, and I reached out to some other municipalities that handle similar programs. This position we're, we're using already exists within the township. We have a part-time firefighter position. We have. Um. A budget line item for it. Um. And it's actually in the P M P, like for a part-time position. So. We went ahead and, and, and moved forward with the creation of the new position. Um, the rollout has gone extremely smoothly. I put out a bid cycle just to see what the, the, the gauge interest and we filled every weekend from now until the end of December. So every shift is full from. This weekend till December twenty first and then the next bid cycle starts out. Um, so. That's where we're at on that program. Um, and then you guys have the response data in front of you. We're consistently thirty calls right now per month almost. Um, and response times are kind of floating in that same window. So.
Alright, questions for Josh?
Well, I guess not. I mean, if it filled up that quick, do you think that the, the rate's too high?
Um, so I will come back to the board when we do our budget. Cycle and propose an actual. Set schedule and we had talked about a wage schedule. The part-time rate. Is, is high. Um, we've, we've all had those discussions. So right now, a one-year firefighter is making the same amount of money as a ten-year firefighter and we will address that. And I, and if we can address that in another meeting before the end of the year, then, then by all means, I can, I can present something at the next meeting for that, but um I don't think. It was easier to fill that because somebody's making an hourly rate for twelve to twenty-four hours while working as opposed to we were asking them to give up twelve hours of their time at home for seventy-five dollars. And so people, they wanna, people wanna work. They wanna, they wanna do stuff at the station. They wanna be involved. I can give projects and I can kind of get some of the stuff off of my desk. And the people working on the weekends, so.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, thank you, Josh.
Yep.
Alright, P C report, Randy?
Hey, you have a written report in your packet and just highlight a couple of things here. We. Uh, work continues with the uh R O W G, the Resident Outreach Work Group. Uh, contact has been made with Michigan State to help us with uh a couple of things, uh, the workshops as well as the survey. Um. They're also looking to send some people to a virtual workshop on creating S T R ordinances. So that's moving along and uh we, the last meeting, we discussed the. Work that's being produced by Giffords Webster on the zoning amendments. There are five bundles, essentially terminology for. Groups of zoning amendments that are being worked on. They just produced it. There'll be a special meeting on November twenty fourth to start going through that. It's about a hundred and some plus pages of text of recommendations of changing uh the co-pod, the development process, condominium regulations, et cetera. There's a lot of issues in there that need to be untangled. Uh, Gordy Fraser attended our last meeting and did training on site plan review procedures to uh improve our process here. They gave us a flow chart checklist that was provided. And uh they also mentioned that we have them under contract now to help us with the private road ordinance and that work is underway. And we'll soon be going forward to the planning commission. They've been working on a draft winery ordinance that was sent to the township attorney for uh general review. It wasn't a detailed review yet, knowing the. The charged nature of that project or that, that topic uh in this region. They had a brief conversation about a bylaw amendment to address some of our procedures. And then also had a proposed zoning amendment that's been filed to amend the zoning ordinance with regard to fence heights. So the next meeting in December will include a public hearing on that proposed amendment. Included in the report there is the uh material that the um. R O W G is working on in terms of white papers where they're organizing the research and reports that they're preparing. Um, so that there's a form and substance to this and looking at other places, what other communities are doing and, and, and inspiration, I guess. So, a lot of work going on.
Why are you considering changing the height of the fence?
An applicant has proposed that change, a resident. A, just much like.
One, one person?
One person. And that's allowed and.
So you have to go through that whole process then to public hearing, everything?
It's, it's, it's really an uncomplicated um proposed amendment, changing it from six to seven feet.
Do they pay for the cost of the, okay.
Yes.
Prices.
Just to clarify, is that just the um application fee?
Yes.
Or is it above and beyond that as far as?
The application fee of three hundred dollars. It was filed back several months ago. Before the fees were changed.
And at this point, they're thinking they can handle it within the context of their regular meeting agendas?
At this point, yes.
Okay.
I guess it was just really brought up at the last meeting and, and uh.
I guess if I have any concerns with it, I can raise it with the planning commission because I do, but.
Well, and it would also come to the board too, of course.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as a board member, I don't want to. You know, I mean, go to the planning, but can I give you my opinion on it? As our representative from the board? I don't need to do it right now, but.
So, just so you don't, and just like the standard thing, this will come to us eventually also. If they approve it. If they approve it.
It'll, it'll come to you either way.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the same.
Okay, either.
Other one. Comes either way.
Did you see somebody look in a box? Um, just so you know that on your um that reen did here, this form. Under Grand Travers County, occupancy is spelled wrong, just so that doesn't go out. Let her know that.
What's that?
Word occupancy under Grand Travers County is spelled wrong on page eight. The form.
Oh.
I see these things.
Spell check.
That's, I see these.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Randy? Okay, we've got uh Deb, zoning administrator reports. Any high spots you wanna hit on that?
I'm in the essence of time, um, unless you have questions about my report. Um, just for the record, the um. The amendment that came in on July thirtieth was given to the uh P C chair in August. He just got it on the agenda. So it wasn't delayed in the zoning department. It was. With the chairman and it didn't get brought up at the meeting. Um. You know, um, things have slowed down a little bit, but uh it's still pretty busy in zoning right now. You have any questions? I don't have as much to say as the park has going on.
I don't.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Deb. Alright, now we're up to consent calendar, so we did add a bill for payment, which uh. We were given and also we added closed session minutes. So does anybody wanna remove any items from the consent calendar? Um, I, I think possibly we need to remove the closed session minutes because we have to actually hand those out and review them. Uh, okay, does that make sense that we would remove that just because maybe we can approve the rest of it?
So on the October twenty. Three minutes, I sent some. Edits to that, did that get, did you accept those, Wendy, or no? Okay, then I'd like those pulled.
Okay, so we've got the closed session minutes and the October twenty-three. Minutes. Okay, are those the only items that need to be removed from the consent calendar? Okay, then I would move that we approve the consent calendar as amended. I'll second that. Okay, motion made by Slope Suma, seconded by Hoax Suma. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Those opposed? None opposed, motion.
I'm gonna just say no.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, no.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, so. Do we need a roll call vote at that point, Wendy, for you?
Uh, sure.
Slope Suma.
The motion again, I'm sorry.
It was the motion was approve the consent calendar as amended with the meeting minutes removed.
The open and closed.
Yes, correct. Slope Suma, yes. Hoax Suma, yes. Kester, yes. Aaron's.
No.
Milne.
Yes.
Alright, motion passes.
Can I ask why?
I didn't um. Wanna pull it and discuss it, but I don't agree with the clerk's report.
Alright, well, thanks. Close session minutes, would you like to distribute those?
Okay. And they just need to be initialled at the top and then I'll take them back and we'll put them in the seal. Okay, thank you. Oh, sure.
You weren't bad. Sign it.
Yep. Thank you.
Need a voice vote on, uh, in addition to those sign offs or no? Okay, do we need a voice vote on um accepting those minutes in addition to the initialization of them?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a motion she said. Alright, seven minutes. Um, and yet over nine, I see our later.
Yeah, okay, so, so a motion to approve the closed session minutes as presented for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. I will second that. So a motion made by Hoax Suma, seconded by Slope Suma. All those in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Those opposed, none. Motion passes. Alright, so now let's move on to the meeting minutes. From October twenty-three. And the version online is, is the current draft, is that right, Wendy?
Correct.
Okay. So who would, who would like to make any comments for any corrections or changes?
I have some comments. Um. I've just been really concerned about us posting um the draft meeting minutes in the Elk Rapids paper without any of us reviewing them. And in looking at what we posted in Elk Rapids versus um the draft that we're supposed to approve today, I mean, there are substantial differences. And my understanding is, I know we have eight days to get the um something to the public um after our meeting. And we're not all gonna be able to approve those, so drafts are acceptable, but um. It is also only required to publish a synopsis of proceedings, not all these details. And I just feel that why I'm concerned about this is I feel like uh there have been things very misrepresented, especially particular towards me that um. You know, this becomes a permanent record. Um, and then we only have the chance to change it here and who sees this? Um, but just even looking at these two documents side by side and comparing them, there is a lot of differences, so I don't know. Um, what I read and understood about this is that we can make our own internal policy of how we wanna handle publishing these things in the record. Um, or I mean, in the uh Elk Rapids paper, but I personally would like a chance to review these before they're published. And I would also request, um, I would really like to see Kay's meetings to her minutes versus what. What has turned out.
It's my statutory duty.
So I know it's your duty. I'm not, I just would like to see the differences, like what changes are being made from what's being recorded because I feel like a lot of it is um. Leaked a little bit to particular people's benefits and, you know, to the detriment of others and I would just like to see. How we can make things a little bit more accurate.
I hear what you think is the differences between the two.
I just wanted to say though, I, she works for her. So. She sends stuff to her. She can change whatever she wants to change. She's the clerk. Um, we don't even need a recording secretary. The clerk is the recording secretary for the township, so um she's working. About our approval, but she's working for her, so we don't have a right to say we wanna see what Kay sent to her originally. I'm just saying, we don't.
Okay.
So.
And the supervisor also is, uh, making sure that what they say before they go to the newspaper. So that has to be part, that's part of the process.
So the other thing, I, I want to make sure we clarify that the record of the meeting is these minutes. Um, that synopsis is something that's required because of, I think it's based upon the value of property within our community. That's a special requirement for communities of certain amount of, I can't remember if it's a Soster taxable value.
It's a taxable value.
Okay.
And it also has a disclaimer on the bottom that says these are not the approved minutes.
They are not the approved.
I know, but it is, it is public and it, you know, if it's, we're publishing things that are inaccurate and then changing them later, my concern is nobody's coming back to see what the corrections are. This is what is searchable online, it's a permanent public record and I think it needs to be accurate. And I guess my other concern was, is that this is very detailed, it does not need to be this detailed. It can be a synopsis, the detail goes in the draft that we eventually approve for permanent record. So I'm just asking that, you know, this be a little bit more generic, I guess, to, just to meet the duties of the eight day deadline and that
No.
whatever details need to be included for our permanent records are in the draft. This just needs to be accurate, that's all I'm saying, is that this needs to be accurate. And there have been numerous ones that have misrepresented information.
Thank you for your opinion, I have taken that into notation.
Well, mine kind of goes on that a little bit, I did send some corrections to the board minutes. We typically would get them emailed to us, um, and then I would kind of do my red line stuff and send them back to Wendy. I thought, oh, we never got anything, and so I went out to the website and found them. So I was able to download them, convert them and then do the same kind of a thing that I've always done. And I never really heard anything, but, um, I do have, so, because I don't want to go through all this correct spelling error thing at a board meeting, but anyway, I guess I have, so. Um, if we can go to October 23 minutes, unfinished business ballpark lights. Um, it says in here that the supervisor asked the treasurer to check with practice, see if the lights are being used during off season. It was actually during the regular season that we wanted to know if they were using them.
Could you please clarify that? Because I took.
During the baseball season.
During that time and I, that's what we heard on the recording, so.
Well, we talked about it being light until 10 o'clock in the summer and it's like, are the lights being used? Are there any night, are there any night games where the lights are actually being used, is what I recall.
That, that, so how about we just take off the word off?
That, that's fine. Yeah, that would be fine if you eliminated that word.
Yeah, during the season, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. And then.
Could you just hold up right there? Um, when I'm looking at, says inquire whether the lights are being used during the season.
It, it said off season.
It had.
You're just taking the word off off.
Removing the word off, we're looking, I'm looking at the version that's posted online.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the one that I printed of mine, so I'm sorry that it says something different.
So the next section under setting the dates and rates for the park, it says the supervisor Slopsoma and Mr. Aaron's met with the park staff. I did not meet with the park staff, it was just Linda.
The way you were talking in the Zoom was un, that was not said. So that was kind of like, I guess, that you were saying that you met with the park staff with Linda, so that's what was.
It was in her office or in the treasurer's office and I couldn't, I had to leave before Zach got there and Tom. And so she met with them without me, I met in advance of that with Linda. And then at the end of that, a resident has volunteered to build a toy box left behind. I just said at High Prairie Park, not in High Prairie, but doesn't really matter, whatever. Um, so then this is kind of the it was just the toy box.
The ad.
At High Prairie Park, not in High Prairie, whatever. Um, so then this is, goes a little bit to what Jill was talking about, I too, when I read the, um, and I, and I, you know, yeah, it's a synopsis and I read Milton Township, I read all the minutes that are in the paper now. Um, and this is what is shared with the public and it goes to everybody's doorstep. And there's not a lot in there to read, so you almost read everything. Um, and my concern about the, the synopsis that was in the paper is that it gave the impression that we were considering hiring, hiring a CPA firm because the clerk or because the treasurer needed help reconciling bank statements. And that's not entirely accurate, um, that's part of it. Um, and then under this note, under discussion about financial statements in these October 23 minutes, um, it says there was bar consensus for treasurer Kester and clerk Hoaksoma to speak with Maynard Casterson CPAs and the auditor, and it actually was, and I think at that time we knew that we were going to just also want to interview Plant Moran, which was recommended by our auditors.
So this is where I'm going to have to disagree with you because.
Okay, because I don't know word for word if that was said.
It was not.
Okay.
So we can't change the actions of the meeting.
No, I understand, I just wanted to verify that.
Right, so we went back both very carefully and reviewed that and they didn't, that is not something that was said. So that's why I disagreed with your, your recommendation.
Okay, well, and then the end of it though, it says, um, the auditor, Gatebridge and company, um, and I put, I added for a proposal to review and reconcile financials and payroll records.
And we're just splitting hairs because the financials kind of mean all of that to me.
No, not to me. Financials are not necessarily payroll records, financials are the bank reconciliations and the general ledger, payroll records is a separate application. We're talking about, you know, filings, payroll deductions.
Maybe it's because you've been a deputy treasurer before that people, other people are not going to look at it like that. It's just the financials of the, I mean, if you want the word payroll on there, we're splitting hairs, but at this point.
Well, we mentioned it specifically and you agreed and said they should look at everything, is what I recall being at the meeting.
Again, we're splitting hairs because we, the word financials, I think, covers that whole thing.
Well, reconciling financials, I don't know, I agree with Tim on that too, because it does, again, it's just kind of implying, um, it's implying some stuff.
And then the last thing that I had, um, was.
So can I wait, what are we going to change the sentence to say?
Well, I don't think it needs to be changed at all.
To review and reconcile financials and payroll records.
I think it should have had payroll records.
I agree that we talked about payroll.
We did.
Tim, you also just mentioned, um, for a proposal, do you want proposal in there somewhere?
Yeah, we were looking for a proposal to review, to bring back to the board, so it wasn't.
Okay.
Wasn't just speaking with Maynard Casterson, it was for the purpose of bringing a proposal back.
Yes, it was to, to get a proposal.
So that we could act. To review proposal and reconcile financials and payroll.
Right.
A proposal to review and recognize, reconcile financials and payroll records.
And then under board comments and discussion, um.
Page of that, oh, down, I got you, go ahead.
So here, um, the thing that I had with this was, um, we get to treasurer Kester talking about her conflict of interest. Um, and it says she redacts her previous conflict of interest declaration and will, and will participate in more discussions and decisions. I just scratched the word more. Um, she will participate in discussions and decisions related to short term rentals going forward.
So this was a really hard thing, uh, especially for Kay and I, because we were trying to keep it accurate and try to keep it to what she said so that this kind of thing wouldn't happen.
Right, did she say more?
Yes.
Okay.
I went verbatim.
Okay, all right, thank you. While I questioned that, this is why I'm bringing it up.
Sure.
So then, so then here, um, it says for reasons why she does not believe, and it said this pertains to her.
What she said.
Well, what pertains to her, she has a conflict of interest is what I put instead of this pertains to her, but.
I, I read that to mean that why a conflict of interest does not pertain to her.
But if that's what she said, then that's what she said, so. Okay.
And could I just say I, I, I don't do verbatim, but I didn't want to reword her, um, comment.
That's what she said.
An expl- explanation, so.
Okay, thank you. But that was all I had.
Are there any other, um, corrections or changes that anybody else has? Jill, was there anything more that you had?
Nope, that would be it. All right, Randy, I don't have anything further.
Nope.
All right, and I can make a motion to approve the October 23rd minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Seconded by Aaron's, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Those opposed? None opposed, all right. All right, the next item is really continues that discussion, uh, there's consideration of a CPA firm contract, so that starts on page 25.
You want to introduce Jill?
Yeah, um, I guess I would like to start, um, the conversation as we just discussed in the, um, 20, October 23rd meeting minutes, we, Wendy and I were asked to get with these different companies for a proposal. And when I asked Wendy a couple of weeks ago if she wanted to make the call or wanted me to make the call, she said, um, she had no intentions of making the call because it had nothing to do with her. So that's.
That was not what I said.
That is exactly what.
No, I, I did not say that.
It is exactly what you said. Okay. Um, so Tim and I decided at that point that we were going to go ahead and talk to the companies and see what we could find out. And, um, I want to read something that I wrote out so that I would not go off track and it's under five minutes. But, um, based on some questions I've received from the public, based on some miscommunications and some prior minutes that kind of, I feel like point the finger at me for everything. I really want to clarify a little bit of, um, the series of events that have taken place since we've taken office, where we are today and what we're planning on doing about it.
Can I, can I ask, is this pertinent to, we're here to
Yes.
evaluate and
About the CPA.
vote on whether or not we want a CPA to come in here.
Correct, I want to, I want to explain like how we got to this point and why we need the CPA at this point. So, um.
I think I know, based on the last meeting, why we need this.
And we can read the memo.
Okay. Well, is there, like?
I, I think I need to correct, yeah, I, I would like to correct some, um, misinformation and, and just state some facts. So if I'm not interrupted, it'll take less than five minutes for me to just read through this.
Quickly.
All right, based on some questions I've received from the public and several board members, I'd like to take a few minutes to provide an update on the current state of the township's accounting and record keeping systems. When this administration took office a year ago, the treasurer's office and the clerk's office were using two separate accounting systems. I was using Sage and the clerk was using Fund Balance. Each office was responsible for entering all revenue and expense transactions, reconciling accounts with bank statements and then comparing reports to ensure accuracy as a system of checks and balances. Took some time to learn these systems and procedures, but the treasurer's office successfully reconciled all township accounts to the bank statements within Sage in time for the audit. To ensure accuracy on my end, I worked closely with a CPA who had 30 years' experience in Sage. However, after all our reconciliations were done, we were never able to balance our reports with those from the clerk's office due to the fund balance reports having missing and inconsistent data month after month. The clerk was responsible for maintaining accurate records in her accounting system in the same way, especially since it was her system that was being used to migrate to BSNA. Although she stated that her accounts were reconciled to the bank statements prior to the migration, our reviews and subsequent audit findings indicate that this was not the case. After the transition of BSNA in late August, the BSNA trainer discovered a file with several months of campground revenue that the clerk had never entered, which prompted me to begin an internal audit process. We are only a couple of months into the audit, but have found that approximately 40% of deposit records just from April and May alone were never entered and several transactions were, were incorrect, where credits and debits were reversed. These findings alone reveal that the accounts in Fund Balance were never reconciled prior to the migration to BSNA and why the clerk's reports never matched the treasurer's reports. Our auditor has already advised that this year's audit will not meet compliance standards, standards primarily due to inaccuracies in payroll and tax reporting, which need to be corrected immediately. The auditor also noted challenges in tracking revenues and had to make numerous journal entries to reconcile the books. A full report detailing these findings will be provided to the board soon. In addition, we know there are issues with our pension plan and employees have not been receiving their deposits. Looking ahead, once the year's audit adjustments have been completed, I recommend that we engage a CPA firm to review the clerk's entries for accuracy and completeness with particular attention to payroll. Payroll issues must be corrected without delay and I strongly suggest that we consider contracting an outside payroll service to ensure that all W2s, 1099s and tax filings for 2025 are accurate. The service should also retroactively review payroll records from the start of our current term to verify that employees were paid correctly and that all tax code payments and filings are up to date. At present, the township could be occurring penalties and interest due to unpaid and misfiled payroll taxes, and the longer these issues remain unresolved, the greater that liability will become. In addition, I recommend that we have the CPA firm provide training for the clerk's office to ensure transactions are entered correctly and to provide overall understanding of accounting practices. I also propose that they establish a written workflow policy between the treasurer and clerk's office to divide, define exactly what financial data must be shared, how it will be provided and what procedures at BSNA allow for proper checks and balances between departments. This will help prevent miscommunication, ensure that both offices can perform their statutory duties effectively. To be clear, there is no indication of missing funds or misconduct, misconduct. The issues appear to stem from inconsistent or incomplete bookkeeping practices from the clerk's office. With proper oversight, training and process improvements, I'm confident these problems can be fully corrected. Once the CPA firm provides us with an accurate and balanced starting point within the BSNA, I'm confident that the treasurer's office can maintain reconciliations going forward and ensure accounts remain current and accurate. However, it is important to note that the responsibility for past record keeping errors and fund balance that are now in BSNA does not rest with my office. My focus will remain on ensuring that we have accurate, transparent and compliant financial operations moving forward.
My turn?
Yes.
So here's the thing, I hope you have a lawyer for slander and you have documentation of that. Also, the clerk only puts in things to fund balance that the treasurer gives them. They're only responsible for what the treasurer is giving them, so it's only, fund balance is only as good as what the treasurer has given them. So that's what, and this is my turn, point of order. So I have something I'd like to read into the, um, minutes and I would like it quoted in the minutes, um, to the secretary. So I agree that the township board has a fiduciary duty to ensure that all statutory duties are being performed under MCL 4175A and 41, MCL 4177. The treasurer is legally required to reconcile the township's accounts, not the clerk. The treasurer has acknowledged that these reconciliations have not been completed, which places the board in a position where oversight is required. I have done this to the best of my ability, I have fulfilled all my statutory duties. In the interest of transparency and fiscal responsibility, I consent to a strictly capped, limited review by an outside firm, provided is for review only and does not replace or reform the treasurer's statutory duties. Any training the treasurer feels she needs should come through BSNA and the Michigan Township Association, and I am open to this as well. These are the proper, legally appropriate training sources and the township has already paid for online webinar training through these organizations. Training should not come from a CPA firm that charges us $250 an hour. I also have a lot of questions about this very long proposal that seems very much in their favor, including their confidential information could be shared. Um, if anything, oh, was requested of them, like a written request of them, we would have to pay for them to, um, provide the information. Also, the taking keeping of documents and the statutory, um, limits of those, um, I just have some issues with those, especially when it comes to like FOIA or record retention. And that there's no limit on this proposal, so we could use it for however long we wanted. Um, I just have a lot of issues with that and I think that the attorney needs to look at it, make sure that we're all good with it.
May I respond?
I think every person needs to have one time.
I guess, are there any other questions, Randy? Um, do you have any comments?
So this firm is, is the only one that we have a proposal from?
We had one from Plant.
We had one from Plant, Planton Rand. And we interviewed both, and they both come highly recommended, as I said in the memo. But after the interviews, both Jill and I just felt that Maynard Casterson just fit what we feel we need right now. And we're not looking at hiring them for a long-term engagement. We don't really think it's.
I was not lying, was Danny either.
Yeah, we don't really think it's going to take that long. It needs to just get us to today. And then just as far as the mentoring, it's not training, as far as the mentoring, they're familiar with BSNA, they're going to, as far as bank reconciliation to the financials, they're going to run reports in BSNA, and then they're going to show the treasurer, because now the treasurer is responsible for that going forward, balancing the bank reconciliations to the financial statements.
In a township, she always is.
Yes, but I can't reconcile your accounting records when I have no access to them. I just got access to BSNA where I can see your records.
But so we're in a different, it's a different day now, since August, since we did the conversion. Roles and responsibilities have been changed from what they used to be, not statutorily, but how this township operated in the past is what I mean. So now, the treasurer is responsible for reconciling bank statements to the financial statements, and there's a reconciliation program within BSNA to do that. And so this is where they can provide mentorship to Jill and Andy on what reports to run and that kind of a thing. And I really don't think it's going to be a big lift because we only, our bank statements are only like two and a half pages. There's just not a lot of activity in that. And then, and then the other activity that they were going to be looking at is the auditor got us reconciled through March 31, I think even maybe through the end of April. And well, that'll be kind of the starting point for.
The end of our last fiscal year.
Right, right. So that'll be kind of the starting point because our fund balances will be all reconciled and everything. And then all it is, is just going back to November of last year and just confirming certain things in payroll. There's not a whole heck of a lot to, I mean, there's only so many quarterly reports and so many filings and whatever, but just to verify things within payroll that per state of Michigan, per IRS, that things have been, deductions have been made, payments have been made, so that we don't get kind of surprised in 2026 that, hey, you never did this or that, and make sure our W2s are right at the end of the year. So I do feel that they're going to be able to get started quickly. And I don't see them, I mean, I can't guarantee, but I don't see them maybe coming across as intrusive. It's going to be just like the auditors asking for this report or that report. And we want, we feel that it's important too, because some of this information to do it now is because we have a maintenance agreement with Fund Balance. And I know when we first got elected, we paid three thousand or something to continue that. I don't know when that expires. We don't want to continue it again.
December first.
Okay, so we kind of want to make sure we have access to Fund Balance in case they need any information out of Fund Balance, so that we can just be done with Fund Balance. So that's sort of.
One other question. So the, the deliverable of this work here from this firm is their deliverables to the township board, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But they'll be working with.
Right, I understand, but, but their findings, conclusions, and come to the township board.
I don't know what to expect. I don't expect a report necessarily. I expect them to reconcile, I expect them to do the job we're hiring them to do. And they're going to have to provide verification that, yeah, everything in payroll looks good. So I guess that comes in the form of a report.
Okay, I guess I'd just like to see some conclusion to their, their work as opposed to saying it's okay or.
Maybe they'll do a presentation.
Okay, so I guess whether that's done or not, but just some kind of deliverable that says, this is what we did. This is what we found.
I'd like to talk to them about how that shows up to all of us.
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to know, but we all want you to know too.
So do they address and identify missing or incorrect?
No, it says that in here.
Let me just finish my question. Are, is there, is there a job to identify and itemize errors and errors of omission? And then it's up to whichever, if it is on, for example, if it's an accounts payable issue, is, is it then handed over to Wendy to actually make the correction? So do they actually make the correction or do they just identify the issues, the itemized issues?
They can't touch our system.
All right, so they identify and itemize the issues, and then those issues have to be addressed. And I, I guess, I guess I'd like to, I, I listened to what everybody said. I think the bottom line is, we have a problem. We don't have missing or misappropriated money. We just have an issue regarding the accuracy of our financial statements. So how, how we show how it was spent. And so it's not like there's anything nefarious. It's a record keeping issue. And I believe it is urgent that we get that addressed, both, both the booking, the incoming money, outgoing money, and including payroll and all the various additional transactions that have to happen with payroll, such as taxes.
And, and I'll just say, I, I do, I've worked with Wendy, I've worked with Jill. I have confidence in both of them that they're going to be able to do this going forward. I just think we need to kind of catch up. We've done a, we've done a major conversion on every application that we have. Not only that, switching to DocUp, switching, going through audit, newly elected, there's so many different issues. This is not on any one person at all. It's, it's like the perfect storm to me. And I think we, we just need to have assurance that every, all of, you know, all of our i's are dotted, all of our t's are crossed. As trustees, that's our responsibility, our role, kind of that oversight to make sure that kind of stuff is going on. And I, for me, this, this is something that I, I think that we need at this point.
I'm, I'm fine with this. I just want to make sure that there is some kind of deliverable at the end, and we just, this doesn't go away. Just, I mean, we, we get to conclusions, we find out what's wrong, what's right, what do we need to do to fix this? And maybe that's establishing better procedures. And, and obviously, they're familiar with BSNA, so.
And they also will work with our auditors to, they've identified certain issues in the audit, and they have a relationship with this firm. They, they had a relationship with both firms, actually. And they'll, they'll be able to help in identifying, you know, look at this, look at that, or that kind of thing, so.
One of the reasons why we felt like this company was so good too is they have numerous people in their, in their department and company that have been in these positions. They're intimately aware and familiar with how BSNA works, and they've done the job. And so I think that is very important as well, and they had a much more comprehensive.
Thank you.
Payroll.
Thank you, Randy.
Much more comprehensive payroll reconciliation and audit process.
So I'm wondering if Wendy's concern about the cost could be addressed by applying a not to exceed. You know, they should have to be communicating what they've done and the cost regularly. And so that we can monitor that and applying a not to exceed. Like, did you get, did they tell you roughly the amount of time and the order amount?
There is no way they can predict without looking into our system at this point. I mean, they might be able to give us an estimate on time once they get in and start poking around and see.
My concern is that we already spent $5,600 with Gaybridge to get reconciled up to 331. And now how much more are we going to pay for this?
So that was for the Sage system?
Right.
And so.
Fun balance was never reconciled, so now we're back to square one because Fun Balance was the, the accounting program that we use to convert to BSNA.
I understand that. I'm not really sure why we didn't focus on reconciling the Fun Balance.
So definitely, no. She, she told me that it was reconciled, so I don't know why you're saying it's not.
It's not. I mean, you could easily, you could easily print the reconciliation reports if it was ever done. You could easily prove that by printing reconciliation reports, but just from.
So you're saying that in Fun Balance, there's checks that were not cleared. That's not what I'm saying. She was reconciling the actual trial balances to your trial balances in Sage. That was her reconciliation, not her saying, oh, this check is cleared, this check is good.
So I don't think, this is really, this is my opinion not going to get us anywhere. We're never gonna, never gonna land on the same spot.
I think, I think we.
I also, my other concern is if you're, you're saying that they can't touch the systems because as a statutory duty of the treasurer, she has to be the one to do the reconciliation. They cannot do that.
That's, yeah, that's what, that's why I tried to ask that question earlier. They will itemize the items to be addressed or fixed in one way or another. And then, as appropriate, one or the other of you will have to make those adjustments.
They're going to request access to BSNA, which you will have to grant them as the administrator, so that they have the same kind of access that the auditors.
That's not what this says in here. They are saying that through this online portal, that you send through your information to them.
Okay, that, maybe that's how they work it.
SuraLink.
Okay.
A virtual workspace.
So that's probably better.
Tim, do you have a sense of what a not to exceed number should be for something like this? And that, that we couldn't go farther, but just get board approval if we go past a certain number?
Well, I suppose, a couple of different ways. I suppose you could enter into the agreement. And then I think the board can make the motion to initially say to, in an act, to not to exceed amount.
So you said about thirty was started?
Without prior authorization?
I did, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
There, there's a number, and you would just say that without prior authorization, you don't go beyond $30,000 or whatever the number is.
Yeah, I think the other firm, they were quoting that follow-up email they sent was, wasn't it like 12,500?
I don't remember.
So, but we, you know, yeah, my initial thought is to say not to exceed $10,000 without, right, without board approval.
I think that's a bargain.
It would give us, it would give us a start, it would give us a starting point to see, they'd be able to get in, see how much work there is to do. They, they have all, they have four different levels of, as you saw in the agreement. They have four different levels. Most of this, obviously, a manager at some point is going to have to be involved to oversee the associate's work, but we're going to probably be dealing with associate level pay, which is still expensive. I, I'm not denying that it's not, but.
I think, can, I just, I believe I can write that on the bottom of the contract, not to exceed $10,000.
Without.
Without, without amendment.
I think that we can, we can sign the agreement and then issue a purchase order for $10,000.
Yes, we could do it that way too.
And then that way, if they need more, we still have the agreement that would be the same.
Right.
And we would just issue another.
Right.
Purchase order.
Yes, I agree. You could handle it that way.
Because, yeah, I don't know if they're going to be, I don't know if they're going to be that agreeable to just having you sign the contract and say, don't exceed $10,000. And then you got to start the process over with a new contract.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yes.
It does say the township has 100% control over the hours to be invested in the project and the resulting costs. So that makes me feel a little better, that sentence.
Yeah. And that's why, I mean, if you want to make it 5,000 to get them started, I don't know, but my.
I, I think that's ridiculous. I, I, I really want them to work hard and fast to do this. And I believe you said one of the benefits, possibly in both companies, is they have sufficient resources to be able to like look at payroll with one person could deal with that. A different person can be looking at and addressing the accounts payable and the receipt of income.
Right, they're separate.
And just, I mean, I, I agree with you. I, I know that it's a long list of stuff, but we had separate systems. I do believe that it shouldn't be that awfully hard, because I agree, you know, I, I see some of the activity come through. And I mean, yes, there's activity, but it's not that much. I mean, we see bills for approval. It's only one sheet of paper.
There's not, there's not, there's not a lot of employees there, you know, so.
So I think just.
I'm not saying it's not a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, but I think they can do it quickly because they have the resources to do the project simultaneously. And I think it's important with the close of the calendar year coming and needing to make those. I don't know what all the various deadlines are with the government, but we need to make sure that we hit that. So are we ready to vote, folks?
We need a motion. So we did what we said we were going to do.
Yeah, I know. You're right.
I can, I can, with that limit on it, I can say that I'll make a motion that the supervisor be authorized to sign the engagement letter proposed by Maynard Casterson for general ledger and payroll system reconciliations and training, and that the clerk issue a purchase order in a not to exceed amount of $10,000 for said services.
I'll second that.
So motion made by Aaron's, seconded by Milneck. All those in favor? Hi?
No.
So we didn't address the payroll outsourcing. I mean, they're going to audit the payroll.
We need to finish this first. This needs to be finished.
You did say payroll, didn't you?
Well, they're auditing, but we, are we doing an outside payroll?
I don't think we have enough information to make the decision about outsourcing payroll right now. I think we're.
Oh, I thought you meant auditing payroll, or that's part of the scope.
Yes, part of the scope. So just so everybody's level set, the motion was made for the supervisor to, can you restate it, Tim?
Supervisor be authorized to sign the engagement letter proposed by Maynard Casterson for general ledger and payroll system reconciliations, and I'll say mentoring with the, and that the clerk issue a purchase order and to exceed $10,000 for said services.
Okay, so that motion was made by Aaron's, seconded by Milneck. I would like a roll call vote.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Solipsima, yes. Hoaxima, no. Milneck?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
And I'd like to explain why I said no, not, I'm not against this at all. I mean, I'm not against any kind of review. I just feel like we've already spent $5,600 for reconciliation before, and then we've already spent 3,000 some dollars for a consultant to come in and talk. And so I just feel like there's a lot of training and things from, through BSNA and MTA that could be utilized, and it's not necessary.
All right. We are up to item J3, PMP manual update regarding ACH and credit card payments. So there were changes in the packet on page, I believe it started on page 50, that talk about sections 4.1 and 4.11, some small change.
4.10.
I'm sorry, 410 and 411.
It was on page 50. So these were previously bought, brought forward by the treasurer last meeting. And then I just went back and looked at our own PMP, and just, there was just needed to be a couple tweaks. So previously, the 4.10 had like the treasurer responsible for issued township-sponsored credit cards. And before that, it actually said this supervisor, so, and before that, it said the clerk. So just bringing it back to the clerk again, which I think that just never was finished in the previous board. They wanted it, but never got passed. Then adding the credit card transactions, MCL, this was recommended by MTA. And then on 4.11, adding Jill's name, that she's the treasurer certifying this for approval.
So I believe the first motion we need is to approve the changes that are itemized in the packet to section 410 and 411.
So are the changes, the changes on 410 are just the two highlighted clerk things? Okay, so here are my questions. The resolution 25, 2025-19 looks fine. It addresses all the issues.
We're just talking about the policy and procedure.
Is the policy and procedure manual changed?
Okay.
These are separate. They're separate but connected. So first.
So the, what I'm trying to say though is that the resolution, the information on the resolution is what I was trying to get into the policy and procedure manual, and I don't see this information in the policy and procedure.
So MTA recommends what we have in our credit cards. So basically, our, our whole policy and procedure, that's what they recommend. And they said it makes it legal by putting it in the resolution. So they recommend, so these are specifically MTA resolutions that say that. So this is exactly what MTA has. So it more needs to be in the resolution.
Okay, so the resolution I'm good with, what my question is, on 4.10 credit card policy and procedure, where in that policy and procedure does it say that we are now allowing to receive payments? It's not about us using credit cards. It's about us receiving credit card payments for parks and taxes.
So that would be under the ACH or EFT. That's what they consider those. They consider any kind of electronic payment. Where, where are you looking?
See, it's a resolution for acceptance of payments by financial.
But so in our four eleven, that's what they would consider electron, electronic transactions of funds. So it would be covered under four eleven. So it's kind of misleading because you're thinking credit card.
Yeah.
But it's really electronic transaction of fund.
I just.
So we were already covered.
Okay.
But we're just really, really covering it.
So we're covering the fact that we're now accepting those as payments, that's included. It just is not very clear in the verbiage that we're accepting those payments. It's not about us paying bills by ACH, and it's not about us using credit cards to buy township supplies. It is about us being able to now receive payments for things that we've never been able to do before. So the resolution twenty five nineteen seems really clear to me, but the one for the ACH, um, acceptance for payments, which is also.
So what, but I feel like we're talking in circles again. I understand they're connected, but the first thing we need to do is approve the changes to the PMP manual as, as shown. And then the second thing we need to do is approve the resolutions.
So I guess the PMP is more general and the resolution is the finite, uh, details.
Yeah, I did, I did find the PMP seemed like it talks about being able to use credit cards, penalty for misuse and this kind of stuff. But the resolution is more direct to why it came here in the first place, to accept them.
And basically, it's saying that the ACH policy is set by the treasurer, so whatever your policy is, that, that's what that is. That's the statutory duty of treasurer.
Yeah, and I had some issues with the ACH thing too, because it says like I needed to, um, supply the board with a list of the people that were paying ACH. I mean, that's, that's kind of, you've been handling that this whole time, and I think there was.
Mm-hmm.
Something, yeah, so I mean, I wouldn't have that list, you would have that list.
Well, that's, this is the previous, uh, board, and that's how MTA has it.
So can we take these one at a time? Are people okay with the changes to section four point one oh credit cards? It says on the top amended seven eleven twenty twenty-three. We would probably need to update that to today's date.
Mm-hmm.
But the only changes on this page are to the word, the word, it used to be something else, and now it says clerk. And this is for overseeing compliance with the township's credit card policy.
Which isn't.
And for issued township, I, I know, but she, she fixed this as long as she was looking at this, right?
Mm-hmm. And then added the whole credit card transactions and what's allowed and.
You added the MCL reference.
Right, the MTA wanted in there.
Which you're going to integrate into the PMP manual, that's what you're saying, right?
Yep.
And then, and if I have to separate these, I will. And then four eleven talks about ACH arrangements and electronic transactions of funds. So this would cover, um, for both us paying bills as well as receiving funds.
Correct. Electronic payments in the ACH agreements, yes, goes both ways.
And changes made on this document are just Jill's name?
Yep.
That's all we're changing here. And then we have the resolutions that have all the specificity that you asked for, Jill. So.
And I added four twelve and four thirteen, just because that was the rest of that, this section for.
Right, which is just, I mean, but there's no change there.
No.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the changes to the PMP manual, sections four ten and four eleven as presented. The only correction I would say is the credit card title needs to have today's date on it.
Yep.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
So motion made by Slopsma, seconded by Hoaxma. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, so I guess we ought to do a roll call vote on that.
Kester?
No.
Milneck?
Yes.
Hoaxma, yes. Slopsma?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, so now we can talk about the resolutions, which I got a backup in the packet.
So it really should be resolution nineteen is the credit card transaction. Or it shouldn't say, it's, they don't call it a credit card transaction, they call it financial transaction device, because now you get the tap and go. So that's been updated. And then the resolution, did I just say that wrong?
Um, so can we work on what page number? I'm on page fifty-one, which says resolution for the acceptance of payments by financial transaction device.
That should be number twenty.
That should be twenty. You're marking that up on the original?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Can you please repeat that? Because.
So on page fifty-one of the packet, the resolution number should be corrected to say twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Resolution for the acceptance of payments by financial.
They're just, they're flopped. The nineteen is supposed to be twenty, twenty's supposed to be nineteen.
ACH is supposed to be twenty.
Nineteen. I'm sorry, you're right, I have it wrong.
Okay, so please restate what's correct.
ACH should be twenty.
So what page number is this?
Yeah, it was just the memo that was wrong.
Yeah.
The, the.
The actual resolution.
Yeah, the resolutions are right, the, the motions are, the motions are, have the wrong number.
I've been comparing them and I've been very confused.
Yeah, it's just the motions.
Okay.
So whoever reads them just.
Thank you.
Switch the number.
So let's talk about page fifty-one. Does anybody have any concerns with the content of that resolution?
Yes, this does not specifically state, um, that we are taking ACH payments for taxes. Um, and it's only through BSNA online. We cannot take ACH payments in-house. It is only if they go to the BSNA online website and make a transaction there. So in my documents, I was trying to kind of clarify that. I don't see any clarity on this. I am totally fine with resolution nineteen with the credit cards, that says everything that I want it to say. Uh, resolution twenty does not seem to be any different than really what we had before, which is really more about us making ACH payment.
Okay, so let's deal with them one at a time.
Yeah.
Deal with twenty, I asked the question about twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. And this is where it itemizes financial transaction devices, including Visa, Mastercard, Discover, American Express debit cards. And it says, or electronic fund transfers from an accredited financial institution.
And it says specifically for real or personal property taxes, so this is the one that's going to cover you.
This covers ACH as well as what you're saying.
Yes, so electronic fund transfers.
So then what are we, why do we need, um, resolution twenty then?
Because it's both ways, being paying out as well.
Okay, I thought.
So the first one says accepting. So we're accepting payments. So this is the acceptance, this, this is your department getting money in, right?
Yes.
Okay, so are, are we okay with, and it says down here lower, financial transactions may be made by financial transmission device. And that's where it's what you just said a minute ago.
And the, the part that I actually modified on the MTA resolution example is that it can only be taken by treasurer's department or trained park staff. I added that in there.
I read that.
And I'm curious, this is just a question, I don't really have a problem with it. I'm just wondering why we didn't include zoning or land use permits? Because we were totally willing to do that, and Dub was asking about it as well.
You can include that if you'd like. I just thought it would be easier not to.
Where, I mean, we'd be happy to do it, it's no skin off our back to take a credit card payment. They would just have to come to the office.
So are you, are allowing the zoning administrator then to take a credit card payment?
Um, he could if she wanted to take a device, she didn't seem too interested in doing it herself, but she was happy to have us do it if people wanted to come in and.
So I mean, you'd have to change it then.
That would give yourself the flexibility, as, that's how the world's going.
And some, yeah, some of these things that we're getting with the escrow are pretty big.
No, and it.
That people might want to.
It could make sense to me, um, you know, you're here often alone. Um, when people maybe are coming in wanting to pay, well, they're not here and whatever, and I don't know how you're doing it now, but even if you were set up with a strike device thing, you know, well, the only way, I can't take cash or anything, and I can only take a credit card if that's their only option of payment, maybe that's how they do it.
Does that change or be affected by the bonding? Cause I, I believe isn't the treasurer bonded for.
Clerks are able to take payments.
But.
I think we have the change in policy, but.
Bonding. Does bond, is her bonding sufficient to do so?
I could ask, but I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay, but I guess getting back to the question at hand is whether or not, um, Jill, if you want to allow, um, accepting these payment methods for zoning or land use permits and cemetery plots, whether you would want, want to do that. It's just kind of.
I'm fine with zoning, I mean, I, I would do cemetery plots too, I don't, I mean, it's, like I said, it takes.
It would give you the flexibility, right?
Yeah, it's just they would have, that we can't take credit cards over the phone, they'd have to come into the office and do that.
Mm-hmm.
But I have no problem with taking payments for those two things. Or if Wendy just wants to, you know, sole control over cemetery plots, I'm fine with that, but zoning, we deal with all of that anyway. And it's better than having cash left on my desk, which I walked into the other day and had cash left on my desk with a zoning permit. I didn't, I don't like that.
I don't like that. So we can just remove the financial transactions that cannot be made by financial transmission device shall include?
Correct. You just.
Good, just, just eliminate that.
Eliminate that line, and then you've got the list of five items. Is everybody happy with that?
Yes.
All right. So, and we don't want to mix up our numbers here. So this first, this first motion is the nineteen. So, um, so were you saying here, we need both a motion and a reading of the resolution and a vote? Or just a reading of the resolution and a vote? I think that's usually how we've done it.
Uh, sure.
I, I believe we can just read it. Would you like to read it?
Sure.
You have the original.
Uh, we're, the resolution for, resolution number twenty twenty-five nineteen, resolution for the acceptance of payments for financial transaction device. Whereas Public Act two eighty of nineteen ninety-five, MCL one two nine point two two one, authorizes a township board to adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance of payments by financial transaction devices. And whereas it's been determined by the treasurer and clerk of Whitewater Township that acceptable financial transaction devices include Visa, Mastercard, Discover Card, American Express, debit cards, or electronic fund transfers from accredited financial institutions. And whereas the financial transaction devices that may be accepted comply with the township's depository resolution under MCL one two nine point one two of the Michigan compiled laws. Now therefore be it resolved that effective eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five, the Whitewater Township Board authorizes the use of financial transaction devices and authorizes the treasurer to proceed to implement their use according to the following policy. Financial transactions that may be made by a financial transmission device shall include real and personal property taxes, special assessment payments, park fees, including boat launch fees, camping reservation fees, and park consumables, zoning or land use permits, and cemetery plots. The following departments are authorized to accept such payments by financial transaction devices, treasurer's department, and trained park staff. The foregoing resolution was offered by the board at the township board meeting on eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five by, and supported by.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so roll call vote.
Before you do that, um, it, the verbiage for the motion, okay, the proposed resolution was read into the record. The actual motion verbiage is.
Yeah.
Important to me. And does it read on?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen approving the Whitewater Township ACH, no, wait, sorry. Uh, credit card policy as presented in accordance to Public Act two six six of nineteen ninety-five.
Yes, and is that made by Slopsma, seconded by Hoaxma?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call when ready. Hoaxma? Yes. Milneck?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Slopsma?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Motion for resolution is adopted. All right, now moving on to resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
I just make the motion first and then read the resolution, that way it's very. Motion to, I'll move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, approving the Whitewater Township ACH policy as presented in accordance with Public Act seven thirty-eight of two thousand two. Right?
Yep, would you like to read it?
Oh, God, no.
First of all, first of all, you should probably have a second and not read it, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so motion made by Aaron's and seconded by Kester.
Steve.
So resolution number twenty twenty-five twenty, resolution to authorize use of automated clearinghouse ACH arrangements and electronic transactions of funds. Whereas electronic payments of public funds are required for some federally mandated transactions of public funds and electronic payments have become a commonly accepted practice by banks and other financial institutions. And whereas Public Act seven three eight of two thousand two, effective December thirty, two thousand two, authorizes townships to make electronic transactions involving public funds by electronic payment debit or credit transfer process through an automated clearing, automated clearinghouse. And whereas PA seven three eight authorizes a township treasurer to enter into an ACH agreement, arrangement, I'm sorry, for a national and governmental organization that has authority to process electronic payments or ACH, including but not limited to the National Automated Clearinghouse Association and the Federal Reserve System. And whereas the Whitewater Township Board deems that it is in the best interest of the township to make certain township financial transactions by electronic payments as described in PA seven three eight. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Whitewater Township Board authorizes the township to utilize electronic transactions in compliance with the written procedures and internal controls developed and adopted by the treasurer as the township's ACH policy and presented to the board, township board on eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five. Foregoing resolution offered by Aaron's, seconded by Kester.
Correct. And roll call vote when ready.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Slopsma?
Yes.
Hoaxma?
Yes.
Milneck?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes, I will be reviewing the policy and procedure, though I do want to check on a few things. We're going to have to work out.
Okay, so wait a minute, excuse me. The resolution was adopted.
Yes.
That has to be stated. Okay, and you have an additional comment now, Jill?
Um, just about the, the policy, um, four point eleven, I voted no on that. And I just, I, I'll bring that back to the board with some comments on that, since my name is going to be on that.
Okay, and I, I believe that was the one, though, that you do need to sign for this meeting. So stick around and sign that before you leave. Okay, so that took care of J three, four, and five. Um, tract five-year park and recreation plan review and possible action. Okay, that's on page sixty-four.
So Linda, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Before we, um, if, I would like to make the motion, but in making this motion that's prepared, are we as a board just approving the plan draft to allow it to go to public comment, the thirty, thirty-day period? But that's not our final approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve the project five-year plan draft for public comment and post in the Oak Rapids News and on the Whitewater Township website.
I'll second.
Can I ask a question, though? It does, um, are we approving, I understand a thirty-day comment period, but then it is supposed to go to a public hearing after that.
Correct.
Is it all one decision?
That it goes to a public hearing?
Both. Both. Yeah, there's two steps. Thirty-day comment period.
Public com, I can go through this here. I've got some notes on this.
And we have to authorize a public hearing right now?
Well, um, it does, I think in your memo there, you copied the material out of the guidelines there that describes us, so. Um, there is have, there does have to be a public hearing. There does have to be a thirty-day comment period. Uh, you can approve it at the end of the thirty-day comment period. And so, but we have to be sure that those deadlines are met. And the notice has to be in the paper for the hearing and the clerk's responsibility to put that notice in and, and identify the public comment period.
Then maybe I should withdraw my motion so that it can be in, so that the public, um, hearing can be incorporated into.
Yeah, I, I think we can go ahead and, there's, there's time to do this, but I have some comments on the plan as well that I wanna bring up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the motion first before we discussed, but.
All right, so you made the emotion. Do you wanna amend it?
Well, I can, I can amend it and to authorize a public hearing on the plan. How's that?
Yes.
At the end.
To set a date for a public hearing, is what you're saying?
I think, I think that date is gonna be January eighth of, if, if that's gonna be a Township Board meeting. Uh, I'm just working through the schedule myself. There would be time to.
Because Prac can't have their own public hearing.
Correct.
Correct.
So it would have to be here.
And there has to be a resolution by us.
We could have it in a planning commission.
At the public hearing.
Could, but it's the Township Board that actually approves the plan.
There it is.
So.
Okay, so that was my question. Okay, so the Township Board has to conduct.
By resolution.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the highest authority.
And this is subject to Wendy's review here, but, um, I think January twenty-second would be our last time to, last opportunity to prove this before February first, which is when it has to be in. So if the hearing were January eighth, then there would be time afterwards to make any changes based upon comments at the hearing.
It does, it also says if both the public hearing and the resolution for adoption occur at the same meeting, they must be conducted a separate agenda.
Right.
Items, yeah.
Two sub, that can be, the, the one add that you do.
Right.
Could be advertised that the hearing would be January eighth and the public comment period would then describe thirty days prior to that. So I think that puts us putting into a notice in the paper somewhere in early December. At least by early December, cause it'd have to be thirty days and the public hearing is January eighth. The public hearing or the notice of it should be.
And the deadlines, February first for this?
Yeah, it has to be in by February first to D N R, and it's, it's submitted electronically.
If you're later than February first, what's the consequence?
Then you sit out a year.
All right.
And then the grant applications are due, I think. I mean, if, if there is a grant application, uh, April first. So that's why they want to have the plans done a month or two months before that way, cause that's on my comments here. I wanna get to the fact that the D N R reviews these plans and, and compares it to their guidelines. And, and so it's not just like the township's master plan was approved by the Township Board and the Planning Commission, and that was the end of it. There was no other authority reviewing it here. In this case, the D N R is gonna review this plan and they're gonna say whether it meets the guidelines or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so Tim made a motion. Do you wanna amend the motion to include the public hearing?
I think I.
Authorization.
Add it to the end. I said, and authorize a public hearing.
Okay, and.
I don't know that I need to include the date, do I?
You did amend it, but I wasn't, I was going to ask you for your specific verbiage, um.
Yeah, so.
Which you just.
There's a lot of moving parts here and it's.
Right, but I think we need to have a motion and a second, and then if there's more discussion, that's fine, but we need the motion and the second.
Okay, so my motion is to approve.
Have that.
My motion is to approve the Prac. Well, I don't know why it says Prac, though, but, um, I think it's to approve.
To, I, I think, I don't think you're approving the draft yet because, um.
I'm just reading.
No, it's just for a public comment. He's just.
You're, you're, you're allowing it to go forward.
Motion for notice, yeah.
Yeah, to notice for public comment on this, cause I.
I withdraw my motion. Randy, make the motion. I'm just reading what they gave me. I, no, I don't, I know I'm not saying it right, but
I think, I, I think the motion is to, um, wasn't prepared to make a motion, but.
You may wanna look on page sixty-two in your, on your screen or in your packet.
We're approving the draft plan for public comment.
Yeah, matter of being the draft. Being out to go to public comment and notice.
Yeah, that distinction, cause I don't think we're approving the plan yet.
Correct.
We're approving the draft, even a plan for public comment.
We're approving it for public comment.
Right.
Yes.
You have withdrawn your motion. I would love to hear the new verbiage so that I can get it correct.
Okay.
To approve the draft, I'll make a motion then to approve the draft.
Hold on. Now. To approve the draft.
To approve the parks and recreation land draft for public comment. And.
Thirty-day review period.
And thirty-day review period.
And public hearing.
And public hearing, yeah.
Five-year plan anywhere in there?
Yeah, the title, their cover says master plan, but that's not right, that's not right. That's not the terminology, so just say, just say recreation, park and recreation plan.
Could I read it back to you? Hang on, I have to take an and or two out of there. Hold on. Mr. Milnick, Mr. Milnick made a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Plan Draft for Public Comment, thirty-day review period, and public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we need a second on that.
I'll second.
So motion made by Milnick, seconded by Kester. All those in favor? Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I meant to ask if there's any other comments or discussion items.
I can't.
Go ahead.
I, I have several. I think, um, I think the draft needs more work, um, before it's, it's put out there to the public in terms, and I've got a list of issues that I've identified in it. I can go through them or I can just give them to you in, in written form. I'll just highlight a couple of them. There's some errors in terms of simple things like the meeting of the Township Board. Um, there's references to an appendix that doesn't exist. There's, um, a lack of description of the service area of park and, um, support facilities. There's no listing of private recreation facilities like Silver Birch Campground. Um, there's a need to align this draft with the guidelines that D N R puts out. You, you copied from this, but there's fifteen pages of what's supposed to be in the recreation plan. And I, I would suggest aligning the material you have with the categories that they have so that there isn't confusion about whether or not the topic is covered or not. I see in a couple of places where you could, title sections like they did in, in the prior recreation plan, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-five plan, there was an effort to follow the exact procedures and, or the exact way they asked that you organize this. And again, it, it's primarily because the D N R is gonna approve this and, and they're gonna, there's some person in D N R who's gonna say, is this here, is this here, and they're gonna check it. And if it's not, they're gonna send it back to.
So you'll have to give me very specifics because we did use that, and the prior five-year plan was not in accordance with that. And that's why we had to change up the format so much because we were trying to follow that plan.
I have, I have my list of things I'll give you.
Yeah, that would be great.
And then, um, I guess, but the biggest thing is, is I don't see an action program in here where there's not really, there's not really an action plan, and, and there was in the prior document where it says exactly.
It's in there.
I didn't, it's.
Goals and objectives or?
There's goals and objectives, then there's action, the action plan, section seven. Oh, it looks like this copy is missing the table.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't.
What page is the last?
Says insert table under that and.
Yeah.
Uh.
There's no table.
This is not the right copy, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was having all kinds of problems sending. I think this is the first copy that I sent out, that very first email, and then I realized it was not the right copy.
That was kind of a point I was gonna make. It had observations, but there was no, I was like, what's the plan? I, you know, that's kind of what I was left with after I read it. I didn't.
This is not the, this is not the draft that you guys should have got. I had to send that like three times.
I know, it was on Google Drive or something, then there was an issue with getting it from Google Drive because we shouldn't do that with our township files and so. So is this an earlier version? Is that what?
This was the earlier version. This was like our, you know, like one of the last ones that we, we reviewed and still had to insert a bunch of things, so.
Who is, who is the author of this? Is it Melissa? Who, who's the one that makes changes in it?
It would be, at this point, it would be the graphic designer.
Oh.
I think, yeah. I mean, she's submitting all the information to him, but it's the graphic designer that's now doing it.
So.
Um, so somehow we need to get you guys the right copy. Do you think you can still send that or?
So after you meet it for Prac, maybe then?
Well, I, I think you have. You know, there's obviously a lot of work down here. I hate, I don't wanna hold this up, but at the same time, I think there's still a lot of work to do between to get a document that you put out to the public that they can comment on, cause I don't know what they comment on right now.
Yeah, um, and we need to do this fast because we only have one more meeting before.
Well, it, it.
Can you just say something here? I mean, um, it needs to be right. I get nervous about trying to beat a deadline and yet trying to ask the public to review something between Thanksgiving and Christmas is not a good idea. It, it's just, I don't think it's fair to them, and you probably won't get much participation from them. And even though it would kinda suck to have to miss a year on this, I don't, I don't believe it's appropriate to put something out that's not, that's not the best that we can do. And, um, you miss the deadline, it's kinda like you learn.
Well, I guess the question is, are there any applications we have that we're thinking that we're gonna submit in April?
Not that I know of. I don't know if Melissa's been working on it or not. I don't have any.
The Prac told us they didn't like filling out, and then it didn't feel qualified to fill out grant applications anyway.
Melissa and Amber have. They, they feel comfortable doing that.
We had that joint meeting. They said they didn't, they didn't wanna get involved in that.
I guess if that's the case, I, I would agree. I'd withdraw my motion and then, and say, let's, I mean, I potentially withdraw it. I guess let's talk about that more, but, um, get this document in a shape that, that is gonna align best with the D N R requirements and.
I would also support that comment because I remember that was a key thing that Cheryl Goss shared with us when I was involved in the last recreational plan where she said, if you want it approved, you have to, you have to make it easy for them to compare to the requirements. And you do that by following, I remember her being very firm about.
I mean, just imagine a little D N R person sitting there with a stack of master recreation plans like this and
A migraine.
And getting a migraine, trying to figure out whether or not this document matches their guidelines or not and.
So. No, it looks pretty.
So, I guess for time's sake, um, unfortunately, you guys didn't get the right copy, so you haven't had time to review it cause I was hoping to get final comments today so that we can make the final edit. So if we can get that attachment to where you guys can open it, um, can you send individual comments at this point, since we've already talked about it in a board meeting and then we can give those input?
Are you saying there's a more complete document out there that we just don't have?
Yeah, this is not the right one. This is the very first one that I was able to attach, and then I realized it was the previous one. We were having all kinds of problems opening it.
How different is it?
So this is, how incomplete is it? It's, it's missing a lot of information. This is not the right copy at all.
So we, there is the option of special meetings if you wanted to look at that.
So I guess my, my question is right now, if we can get that document to you guys tomorrow, can you all review it sometime over the next week and put, give your comments to us? Uh, we're meeting, when are we meeting?
He's going to Deer Camp. I'm going to Deer Camp.
I'm already in Deer Camp, actually.
Um.
In a break.
Tuesday.
So how would you guys like to proceed?
I'll, I'll be back. I'll be back on Wednesday.
So our next Prac meeting, that won't, it won't be done for our next Prac meeting in November, but in December, we're meeting on the sixteenth. But we would need, you know, we would need to have everything from you guys way before then so we can get it to the designer and then our discussion on the sixteen.
It'd have to be noticed, though, you know.
You're like, sorry, it's a bunch of time reviewing and.
And then we would have, yeah, thirty-day, well, that, we would still meet the deadline because it would be by the end of January.
For me, it's better to get a red, a document that I can do some redline things. I, I just found some things that, um, were not, um, or.
I mean, there's.
They're, they're just.
I mean, honestly, about twenty percent of it's from the master plan, copied directly or, and, and the word. I mean, the maps are there, the, the text is copied, pasted. So I, I don't know, I guess I don't know what your final version look like, so I can't be too judgmental.
So it, it sounds like there's not really availability to have a special meeting next week. Correct?
Well, you have the issue of, you just said, you know, you're talking about over the holidays, having a thirty-day comment period on this and you, you know, your survey had a hundred people responding to it, so you're not starting off with a lot of participation from the public, cause I mean, you didn't do a mailing to everyone. You just, you put it out there online and you got a hundred people, which is about.
Two hundred, one hundred and ninety-seven.
I thought it was a hundred.
It was a hundred. The.
It was, it was below a hundred, but you know what? It, it kinda made me chuckle a little bit. What I'm kinda looking through is that, so we take this, you know, eighty-seven people, and then we equate it, they fill out the survey, and then we turn it into percentages, and it makes it look like the township, you know, forty-seven percent of the people in the township want us to focus on the trails when it was five people, maybe. I, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You wanted to mail it, and it was, and we wanted to put it on the tax bill, which we did the Q.
It just, it just comes across a little funny. One major thing, though, that, um, you could fix right away, and I don't think it'll be changed in your updated one, page seventy-four. You used, um, I did not agree with how the board handled transferring money to and from the park fund to the general fund and back to the park fund, and they did a lot of this back and forth stuff. Um, but you're using the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, when we have a twenty-five, twenty-six, you're starting out, you're starting out with an audited fund balance of three thirty-one, twenty-two, and it should start with twenty-three.
The most latest, the most latest document has the updated information. That was all we had plugged.
Yeah, because there's sense of negative, sense of negative fund balances.
So you're trying to make it look good to get a grant.
No, well, God, but, I mean, we're so much, yeah, I know.
Now, that's all been updated. This is like missing tons of.
Well, then there's no point, really.
So to make this easy, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
I think that's best. It's not complete. It's not, it's not. I don't want to, but it's not even, we don't even have the right document to even make a motion to go to a public comment period.
Right.
How could we make that motion?
Didn't I send that to the whole board, though? I didn't just send it to you to put in the packet. That went to the whole board.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody was having problems opening it, but you guys all should have the right.
It was on Google Drive, and, and there was a question we asked Noah about us.
Yeah, when I saw this about the Google Drive, I didn't try and launch it.
I didn't, I was concerned and that's.
Yeah, you said, you said it wouldn't work, so.
Yeah, because I got all that communication.
So then it got put on OneDrive.
Yeah.
So I, I guess.
So you guys all do have access to the correct document.
I don't have any idea.
We're not supposed to go to Google Drive directly.
No, but it was, I mean, it's on OneDrive, but I don't know. I didn't, I don't recall getting a notice that I had access, and I don't.
Where would it be in OneDrive, under Jill's folder? You know, if you go to people, or I'm in it right now, but if I go to, um, Whitewater Shared Jill Kester's Files, and I click on that, there's nothing in it. Oh, wait, there is. Prac Graphic Design RFPs, Meeting Agenda Recovered. Where is it, Jill? This is your shared files.
Trying to read them. Uh, it might be on eleven-five Whitewater Township. He and our master plan.
I'm looking.
Ten thirty-one. He and our master plan graph, ten thirty-one, let me look.
Yeah, the stuff that I see under Prac, under that Whitewater Township shared, it's all old stuff, it's all.
This is the master plan draft, ten thirty-one, twenty-five.
If you go to date modified, the most recent one was eleven-five. It's downloading, it's taking forever.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
This is under Whitewater Township Board Shared Files.
Okay, well, maybe it's out there, but.
So if you can, I, I guess, and I thought I knew how to use this now, but I, I see Whitewater Township shared and I don't see that, so you have to make sure that you shared it with each one of us.
See it in Jill's folder, that's all.
But maybe she gave you access to that folder.
Right-click it and share it.
No, this is what Noah set up on my computer from day one and he said that anything I put in that folder, you guys all have access to. It's set up Whitewater Township Shared. He said all of you guys should have access to that.
I, I do see that and I see a folder that says Prac Graphic Design RFPs.
Yep. Uh, let me go down.
But when I go inside of there, everything that says date modified says August fifth.
Yeah, I see it too.
So that does not give me the document that I think I'm supposed to be finding.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure how to get this to you guys then, because.
I'll just verify that that's the right one that's in that shared.
Oh, Noah, because yours, I mean, I'm seeing eight-five.
Oh.
All right, I think we need to move on.
Yep.
From this. Okay, um, Randy, um, by the way, time check. Um, we need a motion, I believe, to continue because we're within five minutes of three hours.
What else do we have to do?
We've got, uh, Randy's thing and then, um, I believe we dealt with all this other stuff. The only other thing we need to do is we've got the added item of the community Christmas tree. We've got October ninth, regular meeting minutes and then board discussion. Announcements, public comment.
Told myself I was gonna vote no for three hours.
I'd like to.
I know.
All right, well, I will make a motion so that we can figure out where it all shakes out and make a motion to extend the meeting for one hour.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Slope, and I'll second it by Milneck. All those in favor?
Hi.
Jill, I didn't hear.
I said I, sorry.
Opposed? It's not, motion passes. All right, so we're on.
Let's be concise.
Yeah. We're on the RFQ for Capital Planning Services. Okay, um, what page are you on here?
Mine's not number here when I printed it out, so I'm, I had a loss here.
Probably because we don't put page numbers on it. All right, hang on, I go round down here to the.
What, it's on page one twenty-two of the packet.
Thank you.
Well, there's a memo that precedes that, with explaining this, with the draft RFQ. We talked about this at prior meetings about getting some architectural help, uh, for the township to begin the conversations about, uh, long-term capital planning. That includes likely this building and the fire station. I put together something that made sense to me as a draft and wanted to run that by everyone. This is not, I don't think hugely urgent, but, uh, I, we need to, we need to do something, I believe, in terms of getting somebody on board formally to help us with some of the planning for the buil, this building, for the township fire station. Combined facility, adding on to this building, repairing this building.
So this would allow us to see, uh, who's interested in doing the work. Um, would they provide approximate cost?
Well, we asked for qualifications so that we could then negotiate, pick the most suitable firm and then try to negotiate a work scope. Kind of like what we're doing with the zoning stuff where we hired somebody who we thought we could work with and has the qualifications and then we break down the work into pieces and then authorize it as we go.
I think part of this too is just kind of revisiting what similar work like this has been done in the past, because there has been work like this done in the past and just trying to make sure all of us are leveled up on that.
I think we all gotta get on the same page and, I mean, there's, I understand there's a complete set of plans for a new fire station, but I've never seen them and I don't know anyone else has.
But aren't we talking about hiring this firm to actually prepare a capital improvements plan? And it seems that when I read your memo and I read that, that your main focus is this idea of a new town hall, fire station combination kind of a thing possibly and conceptual costs and all this kind of stuff. So which is it? Because that to me is a separate, to me, we need a capital improvement plan that puts the priorities together and identifies, because this idea, and I realize some board is gonna have to do it and go to the public and we're gonna bond or we're gonna get a millage or whatever we're gonna do, but that's gonna be a little bit of a futuristic, this six-year kind of a thing on this capital improvement plan. There's other priorities that are gonna be next year and the next year and the next year that'll be ahead of this. So are we, are we developing the plan or are we focusing on that six-year thing? Because to me, that's separate.
Well, the capital, I mean, there's, the capital improvements on the township are really wrapped up in two buildings. I mean, that's, as I understand, apart from the recreation stuff, which was a separate recreation plan.
Well, that, that is a state-required document for the, the part, you know, the recreation, the trails and all that. The stuff that comes out of this has to go to the planning commission and becomes part of the five-year capital plan. That, you know, it's more than just this building and the fire station. It's both parks, it's the trails, it's anything else we have, I guess.
I guess I would think that you're just gonna take this, this material here and this plan and that's gonna feed the conversation about.
I, I, what my thought was, is that, that, that doesn't need, that's not even all encompassing of what really needs to happen like at the park.
Well, it should be though, and that's kind of what we were saying was it, the missing pieces in there, there's really no, the prior plan had some description about capital projects in, in the park and and High Prey Park and Lossy Trail and all these other things that were out there, so I guess I wouldn't think we'd be duplicating that planning process.
I would expect the planning commission though to take that information and incorporate it into the township-wide capital improvement plan and prioritize it and make a recommendation to this board and maybe some of the stuff, whatever maybe Prac gave a higher priority, maybe the planning commission might decide that something else is a higher priority than, you know, and looking at what are the fund balances and the park fund and that kind of thing, but.
Well, there's an orientation towards the programs that DNR has for these, for this, there's three of them or four, I think. You know, the trust fund, the passport program, land and water conservation fund, um. So that's oriented that, but that's, that's mostly the funding sources for larger projects.
And then if you get some money, all of a sudden it bumps up to next year, because hey.
Well, it might be other funds that the township puts into it, so, but I guess I'm, I'm, we'd ever really reconciled a two-edged capital plan, one in the rec plan and one in the something else.
Well, we have a master plan and it talks about our downtown that we don't have, but the corridor. And, you know, is there ideas about, you know, are, are we wanting to think about sidewalks? Are we wanting, are we thinking about extending water service here and there? There's a lot of different things that could be part of the capital plan to me. But, um, you know, that incorporates the master plan and then also incorporates this, which I can see you needing help to do that, but I just don't want to go into this RFQ with a firm having the idea that that's gonna be their only job is just to talk about a fire station in the township hall, because it's the whole plan. Is my thought. Does that make sense?
I would agree. Most capital plans that I've seen are, you know, like killing proof of, it's not just two particular things, it would be everything.
Yeah, I think it's a big part of it, you know, but it's, it's so far out here right now. Um, and you gotta have a plan before it ever becomes a reality and I get that, but.
But part of the scope though is to decide what we need, right? So.
Well, it is focused on this building and the fire station and it's the.
Correct, but what our assets are and then what our needs are.
Yep.
Do we have any idea what this costs?
No.
Something like this?
No, but we don't, but we don't have a good idea of whether it makes sense to continue to pour money into this building, whether you should be looking at an addition to this building or whether you should look at a joint, uh, township hall, fire station. One roof.
I think if you touch the foundation, the building will fall down.
Well, that's, I mean, but I, but you know, there's lots of anecdotal information out there about stuff, but you know, we need a qualified architect or engineer to tell us.
Do we need to potentially table this and let people give some thought?
Sure, that, that's, I don't think this is hugely urgent, you know, the planning commission's ROWG is consumed with the,
Yes.
With the short-term rental issue, I just, just.
Has the planning commission talked about this?
Just the fact that there is a capital improvements plan on the horizon for them and, and that was.
Can you share some of the feedback that we gave tonight with them and see what their thoughts are?
We'll put down an agenda.
And just see what they, what their thought of what this is gonna be?
Would anybody try to locate the fire department plans? Would that be something Josh would have or would that be?
Josh has, she has to dig for it. Last I heard from him, that it's around someplace, but he doesn't have it.
So when Josh and I met with the tribe, we asked them to see if they could find it.
Oh.
I can look harder too. Um, did you have a comment? I also was just wondering how, like when we met with Cunningham Limp, I mean, they might still be beneficial because they do not charge unless they are, you know, part of the process. Remember he was saying that, so.
Yeah, I don't recall, recall that detail, but.
Yep, um, so once they gave you a whole assets and needs and then they were also part of the process of helping you, so that's when they got their permission.
And we could certainly have them come in and talk to us as a group. That'd be a great, um, Thursday morning, this discussion.
What was this again?
Cunningham Limp.
They're the, the main people that the, um, I think they have some differences in how they operate. Uh, because they also deal with, um, managing differentials between contract price and actual executed price. I'm not sure I'm using the right words, but they seem to provide a safety net that they don't just do the plan, they also do the execution and make sure that they manage that after the cost overruns. So, okay.
Some planning commission input then on this. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So why don't we, we'll table that for now. So looking at my agenda here next. Yep.
Are we on L?
Next we had, um, actually next we had the community Christmas tree item.
Oh, that's right, new business, okay.
Um, so I think everybody received the preliminary memo I just sent out to get you guys thinking about it so we could talk about it this evening. Um, there has been a lot of feedback from our survey and even from when we were canvassing before election, um, right up until the Halloween party that people are looking for more community events in Whitewater Township, things to bring people together and promote community and, um, let people have a chance to get to know each other. And there is a group of volunteers from our area. They are not all necessarily Whitewater Township people, but very close by in surrounding areas and some are from Whitewater Township. Um, they do, uh, they are looking to do three community outreach events every year. And, um, this is something that they were interested in doing is a tree lighting, um, little tree lighting, I don't know what you would call it. Um, event at High Prey Park and this is something according to the Prac members used to be done up until about five or six years ago. There's been a tree planted at High Prey Park with an electrical outpost right next to it for the sole pur, sole purpose. Um, the idea is to just keep it simple. Uh, we would like just to do some traditional Christmas carols, light the tree. Uh, the idea of a bonfire is very appealing. We don't know what the weather is gonna be like, but it would be nice to, um, have something to just kind of focus around too, after you sing your five or six songs. Um, to have a bonfire to linger if you wanted to stay and talk. Um, I kind of was envisioning, um, taking four to six of the picnic tables and doing a semi-circle either around the bonfire or around the tree, but all in that area. Um, we would have, um, access according to, um, Vicky, I guess they bought a, um, what do you call those canopy tents? That, um, would be for food and beverage. We could put that under there. We're just sinking hot cider and donuts. Um, I ran this by Prac on our last volunteer day to just get their feedback. Did they think that this would be something people would be receptive to? And they said, yes. These events were never highly attended in the past, but they were attended, um, fairly well. Um, people are already saying, people I've, different people I've talked to about this, um, including the fire chief, have already been suggesting, you know, that they would love to be involved to help. They would like to volunteer. They would like to donate supplies like donuts. Um, so, um, I'm just bringing it forward for discussion to see if this is something we could pull off. I mean, it's not very often you have a whole group of volunteers that are ready and willing to do all the work and pay for everything to make a nice little event in our township. We really don't want Santa Claus and reindeers there because that, that option is everywhere in this area all around us. If people want Santa Claus and reindeer, I mean, they, there's many options for them to, to do that. We just want to keep this very simple and traditional, old-fashioned tree lighting and carols.
So I, I think I heard somebody suggest like the easiest way for the township board to authorize this is for, um, you know, we have that process of renting out the pavilion in High Prey. It gives you access to the property.
You just get an outdoor event permit from the zoning administrator and then your group can go do what they want. It's not necessarily township.
Anything, does it?
No, well, yeah, I think it's fifty dollars.
For the event permit?
Yes, but it's not township sponsored, it's not township funded, it's just a group thing that you're gonna go do.
It doesn't be like, I guess, WESA, WESA, whatever they were, they used to do those, but the fire department was involved and we would need the fire department because that tree has gotten so big now. Um, and Josh said that he could use the boom to.
He doesn't have a boom. He doesn't have a boom. He doesn't have a ladder truck. He said he could rent a boom, but he cannot do that with township funds.
Well, there would be other ways to light that.
Well, yeah, it's not that big. Um, there, you know, we.
So again, I think we can give permission to put the lights on.
Right.
But we can't commit our funds to do that, so they can decide how they wish to.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
I, and we would, we would offer, I think, you know, any group, wherever they are, you know, wanting to do something similar. I can't see us telling them they can't, the same kind of thing.
Follow the rules.
Yeah. The park is there to be used.
Just as long as it's an even rule for everybody, everyone, no matter what the event, they can do that.
I like the idea too, if somebody mentioned, can't remember who, that why can't it just be sponsored by Prac, but, you know, and still use volunteer,
Yep.
volunteer, you know, money and people and all that, but it could be.
Doesn't necessarily need a township board approval.
It would be nice if it was sponsored by Prac. I would, I have the perfect opportunity to get this on the back of the tax bill, um, that will be in everybody's mailbox on December first and then otherwise we were just gonna promote it on the social media.
Do not use township funds to promote it.
Unless it's sponsored by Prac.
If it was sponsored by Prac, we could.
Right, how, how is that Prac's responsibility?
I was gonna say, that's not, that's not in the governance document.
That, that's not part of it.
We are supposed to be responsible for doing recreational activities, I mean, that's.
That's not, that's not what the ordinance says.
But.
We talked about.
What's the, what's the question? I don't know.
It does say that in the, in there, that they are involved for, or that they're supposed to do. They argue about it, but it is in there that they're, they're supposed to be responsible for recreational, I don't think the word is activities, but, um.
Opportunities.
Three opportunities, yeah.
Okay, but that's, well.
Is this called, is this recreation?
Creations, yeah, it's a community event.
It's a community.
And it's coming out of your treasure budget line, you know?
Yeah, so I guess it probably shouldn't be on the tax bill.
Yeah, we'd just stick with social media and.
Yeah, there's, put a little thing in the, um, in probably they, I don't know, maybe they wouldn't do it for, for you. Oh, crap, it's news reaches a lot of people.
That would naturally would.
I don't know if they would do it.
Do it as a news release.
Like that.
From your group.
Pardon?
Do it as a news release from your group, you know, and say, and just.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that way it's not township promoting it, just, we're just, just providing the venue like we would anybody else.
Yeah, outdoor event permit would work, just like the Halloween party was and that was sponsored by us and we still had to do one, right?
Okay, so all we need to do is get a fifty-dollar outdoor permit and we're able to use the picnic tables, move them, um, and what about a bonfire? Chief Morgan did not have any problem with that. Um, I have a big bonfire ring and can supply all the wood.
That's up to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't need any permit? So I don't need any permit extra for that or?
There's the online DNR permit. You have to make sure you don't violate.
But, yeah. It's all his liability.
Make sure that you stay compliant. So what about, do they have to rent the pavilion? We won't be using.
They will.
Not really, use.
They wouldn't use it, but I think I saw, uh,
No, I, I think they just need to go talk to Deb about the outdoor event permit and follow the rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a cost for that permit, isn't there?
Yeah, fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars for the out, okay. They're not using a pavilion or.
No, not really.
Okay, and so are you saying, um, just to get back to the fire department, are they able to volunteer to help us put the lights on? As volunteers in the community?
Anybody should, can't they?
If it's something that they're gonna do in their normal job, they cannot volunteer to do it. So that's, I guess. They could, well, there's no liability then for them.
Right.
Yeah. They're volunteering now.
If, yeah, they're on their own time.
Okay, and it's.
It's like, if, if, if.
So I know like when we would put the light and power fire truck in the parade that they do every Christmas, we, we always had to pay our people. Um, even though they, they volunteered to get paid is what it was. I'll volunteer to get paid.
Yeah.
And the town, did, did they get paid to do anything at the Halloween party?
Yes, that's a liability.
Rangers, but there were other volunteers that didn't get paid. I, I mean, there were other people there, but not our employees, the Rangers got paid, right?
Is a township able to make the decision if we wanted them to be accessible at this event? That we would pay them? I mean, just like they do Iceman and things that are not.
It's not the same.
I thought the Iceman, we get reimbursed for all that.
We do, yeah, we don't pay for that.
Yeah.
So my other question too is that they, um, I haven't heard back from Chief Morgan, but, um, they, he believed they had decorations. Um, but he said they were probably pretty old and, um, may not even be usable anymore.
And so we have to talk to him about that.
So I, I think that, yeah, your group needs to work this out. I think we said you can get, you can get a permit through Deb for an event. And you just have to handle all that. And I think it sounds like the feedback is you can't use the fire department as the fire department, cause then we would have to pay them. So.
Josh knows the rules.
We'd like pictures.
All right, so I think you got what you need, right? You don't really need our permission. You get the event permit.
Well, you know, she kinda needed our permission to, to put lights on the tree, I think, but you know, we're fine with that, but.
Yeah, just remove them when you're done. All right.
They can leave them up for a month, couldn't they?
Okay. Yeah, we would like to leave them up for the month of December.
Yeah.
That's fine. That's what I mean for, through the holiday. Okay, so the next thing is the October ninth regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Anything? Um, I can't remember Wendy, did I, did I make any edits to those?
Oh.
Okay. And make a motion to approve the minutes of the October nine, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made by Erin, seconded by Kester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Or comments and discussion? Um, I have just a short update regarding the short-term rental, uh, misdemeanor case at ninety-two seventy-six Elk Lake Trail. There was a pre-trial hearing today. Nothing was resolved, so it's proceeding to a trial. I guess there's a second pre-trial hearing is the next step. It's a very long process to go through a misdemeanor process, so. Um, there was no resolution. It could have been resolved today, but it was not resolved. So therefore they'll go to a second pre-trial meeting that needs to be scheduled yet. And then eventually to a trial.
And are we keeping track of these, the cost of this thing separately?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And like at the next board meeting of
Mm-hmm.
Something on the cost of this and.
Right.
Um, possibly a discussion amongst the board about where we're at and where we're going and what we're doing.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, um, Tim, do you have an update from the auditor as far as status of completing the audit?
No. I called and left a message this morning and I haven't heard back.
Okay.
He might be at Deer Camp. Oh.
All right.
Just to see.
Yes, it is.
Should be able to call the main office. All right. Um, the last thing I had on here is we haven't had any discussion about next steps on civil infraction ordinance. So what are people's thoughts on that?
Well, that goes a little bit to the point of why I want to have this discussion. Um, I, I get the kinda torn about the whole thing. Heard all the public comments, the concerns. Um, I don't think that what we were proposing is gonna be right for this township. Um, there is the idea in my mind, I'm just kinda like, there seem to be less path of resistance to go with something like Acme has, even if it's not MM or MTA, whatever, um, at least it's something. Um, but what I'm looking at is even though it's a short-term rental issue, but any kind of an issue with, um, a violation, if our only option is, if they won't, if we can't get voluntary compliance, our only option is to hire an attorney and go to court and we started this process with Denise, how long ago? And it's just.
It was actually started in excess of twelve months ago.
I know.
The prior board voted in August of twenty twenty-four. Here we are.
And I just think that we need something that does not charge our residents as a criminal, um, and charge them with a misdemeanor for something that can be resolved in another way. And even if it can't, always it can end up in court. They could decide to go to court. Um, but you could start with, you know, a, a ticket, a fine, and if the fines don't resolve themselves, well, then it's gonna probably end up in court anyway, but at least you would have something to sue for, the compliance and the fines that you issued. Instead of right now, we're gonna either get compliance or we're not, but we're still gonna be out thousands of dollars. Um, and this is one, one thing. And so, I mean, I'm talking about it now more than maybe you wanted to, but I didn't know you were gonna bring it up to right now, but. Um, so, but then I do see the argument too that we are actively working on a short-term rental ordinance. And it's gonna go through the planning commission. It's gonna be coming to us likely in the spring. And it's gonna be something, whatever it is, it's gonna be something. And is this to do a civil infraction ordinance now and not include maybe what those penalties for violating that in it, which should be different than other things, right? It's kinda like putting the cart before the horse. So why wouldn't we just wait until we have something and then just do it once? Instead of then having to revise it with an upgraded fee schedule for short-term rental violations, wait until we know what we have.
That makes, that makes sense, but it's not just about short-term rentals.
I get that, but we still, but still at the same time, that, that's how it's viewed publicly. Is that's what we're gonna use it for.
And I'm, I'm sure about that, but even today I entertained a phone call from a citizen about a concern about a property that's violating our zoning ordinance in terms of land area and keeping of large animals. And the nuisance it is causing for the neighbors in terms of various smells escaping.
That's the Right to Farm Act, though, that's not.
Um, no, not in this case. The property is too small.
Hmm.
Roosters.
Yeah, it wasn't about roosters. I actually, it's, it's about the birds. No, it's not about the birds. Okay, but the point is, is I, I agree that we need a simpler ordinance that's easier to understand. What I think I heard too is and, and I agree is a, a simple visual so that it's not confusing exactly what the steps are. And so that nobody could manipulate or misuse it. I believe I heard that.
There, the.
And I think that we should start working on that. I don't, um, I, and I think we should work on it in preparation for knowing that we very likely will have some kind of a proposed short-term rental um, specification within our zoning ordinance. And it's, it, it's, it's important. I mean, I would continue to reiterate that Deb resolves most issues by speaking to the people and educating them on the requirements. She's quite successful at that. However, she's not always successful.
Right.
Yeah.
And she won't always be, cause there'll be circumstances where.
And, and, and yeah, and I mean, and I actually know people that have moved out of this community because they had a neighbor in violation and it was not, it was not resolved. And it went on for a period of time and they finally just sold.
So the MTA community boards have a lot of officials sharing informations and, and examples right now of not only the civil infraction ordinances, but also short-term rental. Um, so I mean, a lot of people are going through the same things, I think, across Michigan and are, um, it's being shared. And there's a lot of good ones out there.
And, and there are people in this community and, you know, we didn't hear them at the public hearing, but, um, there was a lot of frustration with the prior board that they would complain about something and they did nothing. They did absolutely nothing. They couldn't agree to sue. Well, and I think they didn't wanna sue anybody. They didn't wanna take anybody, right? And there was a lot of frustration about that, that, you know, I know, I know one person that came here several times and came to board meetings and just was able to say what they had to say, and this is a violation and just nothing happened. And it, and it's very frustrating for people when, you know.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So I, so I don't know, it's, it's, um.
I guess one thing that sticks in my mind is that I was appreciative of Linda correcting some of the statements that were made in, um, a newspaper ad about, um, from our attorney that clarified that, um, some of the legal conclusions that were drawn and that, that are really, I mean, I obviously you should get legal advice from attorneys, not from, um, from others, but, um, so I think there was some inflammatory material that, that, and that made the conversation more difficult. Um, and it wasn't really in service to the township in my mind. Um, so I'm hopeful that as we kinda reset on this, so we can get a better, um, understanding of what the civil infraction ordinance does and doesn't do, and maybe there is simplification of it so that people understand um, that better.
My thoughts on the matter is, um, again, I've, I've kinda said it from day one is, you know, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, exactly like what you just said, that, um, until we have the ordinance on short-term rentals, that seems to be the biggest fish in the pond that needs to be addressed. And we don't even know how, if we have a short-term rental ordinance and rules and guidelines and education on the matter, that might resolve. Could have resolved.
It's gonna be.
I mean, you'll still get an occasional once in a while.
It's certainly, it's certainly short-term rentals, but it's also general zoning ordinance enforcement, it's noise ordinance enforcement, it's all that.
But it would be nice to see some statistics and facts, I guess, to see how necessary it is. Like what are we not getting compliance on? I mean, what percentage of complaints are we not getting compliance on? And is it just a few properties with the same people complaining or is it stuff all over the place? I mean, it just would be nice to have.
Oh, you don't have a civil infraction ordinance, why are you gonna even complain? So how do we know that there isn't a bunch of complaints out there right now? So if you're looking at the enforcement though, and seeing how effective it is, is putting the cart before the horse as well, because you don't know what's out there. People don't know.
Does the clerk, I mean, going back beyond us, but is there a file that has, like the zoning administrator, is there a file that has, we have a complaint form thing up there? Is there a file that has all the complaints?
That would be the zoning administrator, but.
So they would have, have to ask Deb, um, I.
There's certainly lawsuits.
I mean, certainly Deb knows what's happened since she's been employed here, and I believe she's coming up on two years. Um, I'm not sure how many historical records there were. I mean, what I've learned just talking to people is generally, public's pretty hesitant to sign their name to a complaint. They're pretty. It's gotta be pretty bad before they, um, will do that, cause they're always worried about retribution. And, um, but, but there are problems out there. I mean, even the person I talked to today, I said, you know, I mean, they're going on and on about the problem. I said, you know, we do have a complaint form that's available to you. You have to fill it out and then the problem is investigated. That's what happened.
Not necessarily. I don't wanna have my neighbor have a misdemeanor. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. There might be fewer complaints now. Uh, if, if you know that there's, they're gonna get a fine and be told or be tried to make under compliance, yeah.
So I think it'll be an uphill battle. I mean, my impression of that public, um, hearing were, you know, it was overwhelmingly, um,
With the people that are there.
Wanting, you know, are pointing out money.
I really, I think, I wonder if you put that to a community survey, what do you, you'd find out if there was a way to objectively ask everyone rather than people who were reading Facebook posts and inflamed by, by material that is not exactly accurate. You know, what, what, what would you get if you really had the balanced participation of everybody in the township? They probably, many would be surprised. I think that we don't have something like that on the books now. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, you don't know. I don't know. But, but you know, I mean, it's, it's kinda the mob mentality where sometimes where you, you know? So.
I'd acknowledge the difference between a misdemeanor and a civil infraction.
All right, so I don't know that we're ready to make a decision, but I thought it was important that we at least have a little bit of discussion. So if people can be thinking about this, I, I do think we need to seek out. And, and when I spoke to the attorney, he said, oh, we can make it simpler. We can do this, we can do that. I mean, I, I personally think if we can find something that we like, specifically, there was a citizen that mentioned, um, a rather unique sounding one from Long Lake Township.
Yeah, I remember that. I thought I was intrigued by that too.
That was unique because there was like a payback.
Yeah, it, it couldn't be used as a endeavor.
It's almost like a whistleblower clause. Yeah.
A, a what clause?
A whistleblower clause.
Yeah, like it, um, if somebody was found not guilty, there was a pay, uh, a coverage of fees plus, plus.
I think double their attorney fees or something.
Yeah, there was something plus for the aggravation. And so, um, it would be interesting to talk to them about that. So I guess we need to be thinking about, maybe there's a couple, couple of us that would work together to try and find some of that information.
I, I, I just, you know, don't want anyone to, you know, I know nothing's been said since that thing and people are probably wondering, what are they gonna do? Are they just gonna wait and call a little special meeting behind this curtain and pass it anyway? And that's not the case, but I just, for me, it's not an urgency right now. I mean, there's a lot on the plate and I just, um, I'd rather just take our time and whatever we do, do it right. And do it, um, not everyone's gonna be happy. I'm not going for everybody being happy, cause that'll never happen. It was something like this. Even doing nothing is gonna make people not happy.
Yeah, for sure.
So, you know, it's. Anyway.
Yes, we've received communication to that effect as well. Okay, um, moving on to announcements, next board meeting is Thursday, December eleventh at six thirty PM.
Which also means November twenty-sixth is canceled, so I'll take it off the board.
Yes, do we, um.
We didn't officially do that last time.
Okay.
Do you have to post it in the window thing is key or something?
Yeah. But you know. A really busy chart these days.
Yes, it's been additions.
That's why we tell people to read the calendar online. Okay, we're ready for second public comment. Would anybody like?
I have one announcement, real quick. Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, we did have our final workday session, uh, PrAC did over at the park, um, last, I think it was last Saturday. Um, and we finished the bleachers finally, got all the fence up and everything is in place. And I wanted to just give a little recap that it took a hundred and sixty-three man-hours to assemble those bleachers. And then the concrete work, which was done by Randy and his, um, business, took sixty hours of man-hours. So it was, uh, quite a deal, but it looks spectacular. I don't know if you've seen them and the concrete pads made just a tremendous amount of difference. It looks awesome. And it's gonna help those last for, for many years. So thank you, everybody that was involved in that.
Okay, public comment.
Well, I just, Randy Steele, Chris wrote. Uh, I just had a couple little things. Uh, I thought for, for instance, when she was talking about, uh, the tree lighting or something, can't the township waive the fees for the permit to have the park? Just to, you know, that's just sort of silly for a public group. And then I didn't understand why, I mean, I, you guys can't, don't have to answer me, but it was a, why can't you put it on the township letter and get it to the community? Cause that is the idea. I like the idea of bringing us all together and whatnot. I don't know if it's illegal, like you gotta worry about people being at the, yeah, so, I mean, I guess there's that, but it seems like at some point the community would be more important than the legal ramifications, but I don't, I'm old fashioned, so. Um, uh, and then, uh, I was gonna mention, I don't think the DNR gives permits after like, da, after dark. Uh, but the fire department can do whatever they want. They can let you do stuff, so. Um, that lady that you guys are in court with, she's a straight-up crazy, doesn't want a lawyer. She needs mental help more than she needs a jail stay, but. She needs mental health more than she needs a jail stay, but she's probably gonna end up with the jail stay. So, um, and then I wanted to touch base on the last couple of things you were talking about. Um, when the people showed up at the, at that meeting to talk about the, um. The, um, civil infraction ordinance. Everybody that I know, I mean, there's a, there's a few people and I understand there's people that have different opinions and we have to go that route. But I do think that that meeting represented the bulk of the community. And I would dare yous or bet yous, however you wanted to say it, that if you put it to a vote. However, you, you know, put that thing out there and let everybody vote on it. I know you can't do that for whatever reason. But say you did, cause I think you could put it out there somehow. Then we'd see what the community actually wanted and something like that might be something that you would want to do to make people happy. But I agree, it's prob, I would say it would fail miserably, but he's right. If we're gonna have something. Um, it's just gonna have to be what the people will tolerate. I, I think that's what you're gonna have to end up with in the end, because you're not, you're gonna make more people mad with this thing than you're gonna make happy. But it obviously is something that we need, so it's gonna have to be, you know, what will people tolerate? Other than that, thank you guys. I know your job sucks, so. Thank you so much for everything you guys do. Really appreciate it. And I'll sign my name.
Thank you for what you did at the park. It's nice.
Yeah, no, thank you very much.
My kids will probably play ball there at some point.
Okay.
Kim Angus, um, couple of things, uh, I believe the previous board just did a capital improvement plan. I don't know if you have a copy of that and it may not cover all the scope that you're looking for, but if not, you might wanna dig it up. The fire station, that print is available. Um, the architect has done multiple projects for Whitewater Township. He would still have it on file. If not, Wendy should most certainly have it in her files, but in addition to that, um, that fire station, I. I highly doubt you know this, that fire station was built. It just wasn't built here. Or a very close one, it actually, um, I believe ended up in a court case for questionable billing practices. Um, but it is available. It was, personal opinion. Totally unreasonable and you can do much better, but at the time there was a lot of research done. There are a lot of stock prints that you can look at, both for combo plans and for combo, combination buildings. Um, that would be far more reasonable than what was being proposed at that time. The last item I really wanna mention, um, this was a good conversation, your, your last discussion. It was respectful. It was back and forth. You brought up a lot of points. But one of the most important points you brought up, um, and I think Tim, it was yours, is that there's a lot of distrust in the community. And there's the feeling that you're gonna throw it out there sometime when no one's looking at a nine AM meeting and boom, you're gonna pass it and there's nothing we can do about it. Board discussion, board comment discussion is not another agenda item. Civil infractions ordinance was not on your agenda tonight. At no point did you stop and vote to add it to the agenda. And despite the fact that I, I totally agree, you had a really good conversation, really good discussion, and you covered a lot of important territory. But having an extensive conversation about it when it wasn't on your agenda is not helping. That public perception that it isn't just gonna get thrown out there and voted on when no one's looking. Throw it on the agenda a, ahead of time, even if you wanna throw it on every agenda for the next six months. It, it's not helping your case. Um, we can come to something that will work for everybody, but. Good discussion, bad timing and circumstances. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna make a comment? Public comment?
Okay.
Make a closing comment if I could, just about the capital improvements plan. I asked Ron Pop about that. There was a plan for the roads, but nothing else.
Roads?
Not according to Ron Pop.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion made by Hope Soma, seconded by Hope Soma. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Yes, all right, motion adjourned.